Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, May 19 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for being here tonight. We'll go ahead and get started tonight by reading our role, please.
Council members, Brecky?
Here.
Erickson? Kylie?
Here.
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
All right. With us tonight to give our invocation is Pastor Randall Gearing. Randall is with our Savior's Lutheran. So Randall, thanks for being here on the phone with us. I'd ask that you stand for Pastor Gearing's invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Gearing, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Fear gets a lot of airtime these days. We are afraid of a virus we cannot see. We are afraid of the other, both masked and unmasked. We fear losing the ability to provide for our family and the dignity that comes from an honest day's work. We fear eviction for not paying our rent and the shame that follows when we need to check into a shelter. We fear a future that we can no longer imagine. Indeed, we fear we are on the threshold of the end of life as we've known it. But the Salist writes, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. All those who practice it have a good understanding." And Solomon writes this proverb, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, and the knowledge of the Holy One is insight." All of Scripture is replete with invitation after invitation to put one's faith, one's trust, not in the principalities and powers of this world, but in the Creator of the cosmos. That invitation comes to you this night, dear council. The responsibilities each of you bear are weighty and significant. The business before you bears out that burden and requires of you your very best for the sake of the common good. But the one who called you to serve your community invites you now to place your trust where it will serve you best, not in your own abilities and gifts, not in political posturing and partisan wrangling, but in the One, the Holy One, whose hands hold the future. Let's pray. Holy One, you have called these leaders to this holy work of governance and decision-making. Guide and direct them by your Spirit. And by your grace, enable them to place their trust in you so that their collective labor may bear fruit that provides for the common good of all who call this city home. Recognizing your presence among us now, we humbly pray this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Gearing. We'll move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. Look for any changes or a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr?
Yes, I'd like to pull items 31 and 32.
All right. Items 31 and 32 will be pulled. Any other changes, counsel? All right. Then I look for a motion, please.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
Motion to approve by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion? All right. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members, Brecky?
Here. I mean, yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
All right. That item passes eight to zero. We'll move on. Item 16, that's our regular agenda. Look for a motion on that. All right. You got a second on that?
Second. Nitzer?
All right. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Nitzer. Any discussion on the agenda, counsel? All right. We'll take a vote on that then, please.
Council members, Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We're on to our general public input portion of our agenda for tonight. And as a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items, following general public input, the comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration at the time only. So at this time, I'd like to invite anyone forward for general public input. Clerk, please know our time is 7:06. Anyone? Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Zokitis, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about an imaginative case of multiple jeopardy. I couldn't imagine this, but somebody else did. We have a constitutional right to be only charged once for a single offense. That's what it says there in the Fifth Amendment. So if you do one thing bad, it should be one crime, one trial, one punishment, and no more than that. Now, I came across a couple of interesting articles in Argus Leader, and there's just a couple of short quotes there. Somebody was charged with four murder charges, and then they were found guilty twice. So I'm trying to figure out what actually happened. Because there's the, you know, charged with four murders and convicted of two. So how many people died? Might have been four, might have been two. Turns out it's only one. And there's a sentence that helped me figure out that only one person died, even though they were charged with four crimes. So why do we have multiple jeopardy? It's got some interesting purposes. It increases the penalty for a crime. And we're number one in prisons in incarceration rate globally. Not something to be proud of. And it encourages the accused to not attend their trials, not even have a trial. And it turns cheap courts into basically a conviction factory. Not what we want. Now, the ACLU thinks that the plea bargaining system lacks fairness, due process, and the rule of law. Again, not what we should be doing in supposedly the world's premier democracy. So as is normal, we should find something to smile about. In this case, it's spring and a beautiful tree. So good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Thank you. Anyone else this evening for general public input? Good evening.
Mark Weber. I think you know me as far as getting head over heels in municipal sales tax. I want to lead you through 2019 and what's happened so far in 2020 in a graphical form. I give this to the city council on a monthly basis, but not in graphical form. I don't know if you're going to be able to read some of this. This is 2019. It's upside down. You'll notice that the yellow line, that's service sector, it's 21%. There's a regular business cycle to that that occurs in 2018 and also in 2020. Retail sales is the red line that has been, had been increasing for 12 or 13 months up until this last month. This is what's happened in 2020. The only change is obviously what has happened with this coronavirus, with this data between March and April. Retail trade is 52% of the local economy. These are all the eight sectors. The percentage that's in the legend underneath is the proportion of the total of each one. Miscellaneous retail is off the map. Most of it is remote seller internet sales. This has sort of continued at the same high rate as far as miscellaneous sales in 2020. This is a much expanded version. I'm not going to go into detail at all. If you see this on video, you can stop it. But this is what the finance department presented this afternoon as far as the highs and lows of what has happened within the last month, April 19, April 20. I've added some things as far as personal services, beauty and barber shops, health services. You can see that the medical labs did a land office business of 1,300% increase. But I will say health services is, I don't really pay too much attention to that because it's very volatile. So I really don't keep track of it. The last thing I'm going to show you. This is Martin Luther's mask from the plague of five to six centuries ago. This is called the plague mask. We're doing the same thing today. I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
I'm Steve Johnson. I was taken aback when I heard the pools weren't going to be open this summer. Not sure why I didn't get to see the whole newscast, but my daughter called me from Arizona because she's coming to visit. There's nowhere to go. I don't know if it's a staffing issue. If it's a staffing issue, maybe we could just postpone it not for the whole year, but till the 20th of June. Put an ad out there. We're looking for help, free training, get everybody lifeguard trained, put the people to work. Daycares are going to get hit by this. The athletes that are looking forward to their events, triathlons, swimming events, scholarships are riding on these people, getting their exercise in. There's a lot of unintended consequences for closing the pools. I think the pool's got to be about one of the cleanest places in this town. There's enough chlorine and sunshine to kill everything there. I know we talk about social distancing. Myself, I think I tend to social distance with my family, away from other people. I don't really see a problem with it. I'd like to see some consideration on maybe postponing the season. First two weeks of summer aren't always that great anyway. But I think if we got some staffing going, at least get mid-coop and maybe one of the other larger pools. When I was a kid, when my kids were little, you know, walk a mile, mile and a half, or ride your bike to the pool, that was acceptable. When you think about the people that are going to be maybe going to the zoo or the Washington Pavilion with these free passes, that could be a real strain just to get there for a lot of people. That's what I got tonight.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mary.
See, I'm Bruce out of Sioux Falls, so I'm going to put this mic down. So.
Can you wipe it off?
Election time is coming, and everybody wants to pick people for ethic violations. And so people always want to pick on one person. So the mayor and Greg Nitzer went to Texas, not only Greg. So if people want to advocate and do the right thing, then let's bring everything to the light and do it in one hole instead of just half of a complaint to the Ethics Board. I'm not the Ethics Board. I don't know if they was in violation or not. Greg's up for reelection, and his name was the only one on that Ethics Board complaint. Totally political here. So what they needed to do, if they'd been doing this for years, they should have had those codes done. If not, I'm sure the city attorney should have helped them on it. But they had two people, not just one, go to Texas. So hopefully, they will bring it back and have the right people to hold accountable, the Ethics Board here. But I don't know if the timing was right or what happened to this, but it only hit right around election and didn't give enough time to investigate in this, to bring it all up. So all these people that were involved have been doing this for years. They should know how the process works. So little technicality should have never happened. They know better for technicalities on numbers here. I want to thank the police department. I'm not going to say too much, but I want to thank the police department for calls for service and being respectful to customers on the phone. I think we addressed that very well on Facebook. And they're working very hard at the illegal massaging industry here. And I hope they continue to shed light on two illegal massage therapists here, on this issue here. As we all know, we have to, landlords, business owners, has to be aware of human trafficking by labor in yells rental houses or commercial businesses on storefronts here. I will get into detail in June about these two specific ones, by human trafficking by labor, and bring out the evidence on it. I'm giving the police enough time to do their due diligence and gather up their evidence to see if we can hold these people accountable. But where these two locations is at? There were red flags all up in the air. And more people should have reported, just then seven or eight or nine people and two business or three business owners should have reported this. We should have had multiple people complaining on these two businesses. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else this evening for general public input? All right, clerk. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Mayor, the items, the next items are items, sub-items 31 and 32 from Agenda Item Six, Fire Rescue Supplemental Agreement, allowing fire rescue to provide backup ambulance service within the jurisdiction of the service ambulance franchise agreements. The vendor's Paramedics Plus South Dakota LLC doing business as Patient Care EMS in the amount of $0. 32, Fire Rescue Lease Agreement for two ambulances with equipment for use by fire rescue to provide for surge capacity ambulance service on a limited capacity for a term of 90 days. Vendor, Paramedics Plus, Paramedics Logistics South Dakota LLC doing business as Patient Care EMS. The amount, $1 per month per vehicle.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Starr?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I told the administration yesterday that I was planning on pulling this item. Chief Goodroad did send us an email early this morning to explain part of it, but I was hoping there was someone from the administration that kind of wanted to walk us through this of exactly what's going on.
Mark Kukovich, Sioux Falls Fire Rescue. So basically, two parts to this. The lease agreement is for the cities who falls the lease, two additional ambulances from Paramedics Plus to staff if needed during the surge. As you saw, the hospitals build bed capacity. We also need to do that in the EMS system as far as ambulance capacity. And so Paramedics PCMS was able to get four additional ambulances from their corporate location in Tyler, Texas. Two of those they have put in service for themselves to utilize. And two of them would be leased to cities who falls for fire rescue to staff if needed during the surge, if we need extra capacity.
Thanks, Mark. Any additional questions, counselor?
I'm just trying to decide if I was going to wait to do questions before or after public input. I think I'm going to wait till after public input, and then I'll see if it gets handled.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on this item? All right. Go ahead.
If I could, Mark, if I can, give me an idea of when. So we're at the part where we're going to transport patients. Fire Rescue is going to use the patients. I keep saying Paramedics Plus. I apologize. I'll get it out eventually correctly, PC. So we're using, we're leasing two of their vehicles, and then Fire Rescue will be transporting potentially from emergency calls in a surge type of environment.
If needed, yep. So it provides extra capacity within the system. And so if, for whatever reason, we did hit a surge, that required more additional ambulances to move patients, which is possible. When we worked with the hospitals on this plan, from a surge capacity for patient movement, not only to the hospital, but also on the back end of decompression, moving patients from the hospital to a step-down type unit, that would have to be done by ambulance transport, and so that would increase need of ambulances within the system. This would allow us to make sure that we can shore up whatever side of that needs to be shored up in order to help out with the system as a whole.
One of the, or I guess my next question then would be, did REMZA approve this change to the contract? Did they make a recommendation that, to advise us as an advisory group to the council that they approved this change in the contract? And the Health Board also make that recommendation?
So we did work with REMZA Executive Director, Medical Director, who we meet with obviously daily. They were part of all these conversations. And obviously, when we went through the plans, as far as looking at resources needed, these are some of the resources that were identified. Patient Care EMS was able to provide those resources. And so we did communicate this, not only through REMZA, but also through the Medical Board as well. And then we do also have it on the agenda for the next REMZA meeting, which is coming up.
So that would be no, basically. They didn't make a recommendation to us, or you haven't asked them for a recommendation to?
We haven't gone through the formal process.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jill, do you want to?
Jill Franken with the Health Department. For paramedics, our patient care, PCLS, to subcontract is an allowable action within their contract. So this would be considered a subcontract that's allowable.
Right. But my question was, did REMZA make a recommendation to the council to make this change and to move forward? Has it been?
That would not be a necessary action that they have to take in order for them to, via what are the terms of their agreement with their franchise agreement, to be able to subcontract. That's an action they can take because it's allowable to do so. They don't have to do it in the manner that you described.
And my point is, is I guess that's what REMZA is there for, to advise us to make policy changes, correct? I mean, that's normally how we move things through, is that they make a recommendation or that it's brought to the board. The board takes action and brings it forward.
If I might, the policy is that they are able to subcontract with other entities, and that's what this action is.
Thanks, Jill.
So then I guess, Mark, my next question is, one of the things we've talked about in the past is that a lot of the risk or the concern is actually in the transportation. So how are we mitigating that risk and getting the additional, whether it's insurance, that we haven't been able to do in the past? So how is that being mitigated? And where are we getting the additional coverage for the risk that we're taking by transporting patients?
So obviously, we work through city legal, we work through risk management and all those things. And then obviously, it falls under the fire rescue assets, just like we insure all of our other providers, not only at EMT basic level, but the EMT paramedic level as well.
So if we transport patients, how will we, as a city, bill that patient for that? And how will we be reimbursed?
And that's through the other document that you pulled, which is the sub-agreement, supplemental agreement. And PCLS would actually perform the billing for that transport. And then they would pay the city a standard amount, a guaranteed amount for each transport if that were to happen.
So would the patient know that they were being transported by fire rescue versus patient care logistics?
Only by the name on the side of the ambulance or by the uniform. And it is possible that it would be, because part of this sub-agreement is the ability for us to utilize each other's staff if needed to during the pandemic in case of a workforce shortage. It is possible you could have a PCMS employee on a Sioux Falls fire rescue vehicle or vice versa to make sure that we can keep the system moving as it normally moves in case one agency is shorter than the other free employees or staff.
One of the other things that the chief pointed out in his email this morning was that fire rescue for mutual aid, and we've talked about this in the past. Has paramedics? Is there any additional mutual aid agreements that are in place so that during this pandemic time, other than the Del Rapids Group for mutual aid? Do we have any other mutual aid agreements with any other ambulance provider?
As far as PCMS's mutual aid agreements, is that what you're referring to?
Well, yeah.
I would have to defer to Chief Operating Officer Bureau for that.
Good evening, council. So the answer there would be, we are, of course, tied into the entire county agreements. Additionally, there are the agreement here. There are some discussions on agreement and subcontract with both hospital systems as well because they have their own concerns on capacity overwhelm. And then, of course, we've had for the last about 18 months approximately, a contract with MedStar as well. So I feel we're probably in our best position in terms of mutual aid than we've been at any point.
Awesome. Thank you. That's it for questions for me.
All right. Any other questions, counselors? All right. I look for a motion to approve these two items, 31 and 32.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Is any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr?
Yep. I, this is one of those things that we should have had an informational about. This is something we could brag about. This is our system working the way it should, rather than being pushed through on the consent agenda and not being brought up. I'm going to support this, but I'm concerned that we haven't taken the time to have this also then approved by REMZA. And whether they have to or not, that's what that board's there, is to advise the system and work with the system. But it's also to provide it for us laypeople that are making policy to have an opportunity to have that done. I'm still concerned that, you know, the logistics of it, the billing, the other things that we've been told in the past we couldn't do, now we can do. And I like that. I like that part of it. And but like I said, I'm still concerned that this didn't go through the REMZA board, and they didn't make a recommendation for us to help follow through. So, thank you.
Counselor Sale?
Just to dovetail on what Counselor Starr said, I am also concerned that this did not come before us. And if the REMZA board didn't have a regular scheduled meeting, this city council knows what it's like to have emergency meetings or unscheduled meetings. I support this. I understand how it works. It should have came to the council. It should be explained to the public what's going on before the process was put together. So I do support it, but next time changes like this come forward, please inform the council. We have informational meetings, special meetings all the time.
Any other comments, counsel? All right. Let's take a vote on this one, please.
Council members, Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to our next item.
Item 18, New 2020 Retail Wine Insider License for Hilton Garden Inn Downtown, 201 East 8th Street, CUP not required. Item 19, New 2021 Retail Malt Beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for the Diamond Room, 3501 West 57th Street, CUP not required. Item 20, New 2020 Retail Wine Insider License and New 202021 Retail Malt Beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for Sioux Falls State Theater, 316 South Phillips Avenue, CUP not required. Item 21, Transfer of 201920 Retail Malt Beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License, including Video Lottery Terminals and Renewal of 2021, 202021 Retail Malt Beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License from 777 Casino LLC, 5237 West 26th Street, to MG Oil Company, 777 Casino, 5237 West 26th Street. Conditional Use Permit 9993-2019 being approved on April 3, 2019.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on 18 through 21. There are some applicants here if you have questions.
Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public who wants to speak on any of these items? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Jamie on any of these?
I'll move to approve Erickson. Items 18 to 21.
Second, Selberg.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion, counselors?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr?
You know, I, some of us are just finishing up our first four years here. And I look back over those four years, and the first, probably the only vote I regret making is voting against the West Mall Theaters for their liquor license. And I wish I could have that vote back. And I can honestly say that's probably the only one that I regret in my time here. And that's why I'm going to be supporting the license agreement for the state theater as well as the rest of these.
All right. Any other input? Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. I just want to dovetail on that also and just thank the state theater for your security plan that you brought forward and your due diligence that you did do to ensure that safety will be handled and used appropriately for your events. I know your theater is a little bit different, but I do appreciate the research that you did for other communities, what's being done. And that's the key to why this is really easy to vote for, because of the work that you did do. So wish you all the best and cannot wait for it to open soon.
Any other discussion on this, council? All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 22.
Item 22, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of East 57th Street and east and west of South Bonson Avenue from the AG Agriculture District, the RA1 Apartment Residential, Low Density RA2 Apartment, Moderate Density, and LW Live Work Districts, number 11986-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, June 3, 2020.
Hey, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jason Bieber representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Luke Jessen with Lloyd Companies. The owner is Bernadine Mill at Trust. It's located south of East 57th Street and then east and west of future South Bonson Avenue. It's about 15.73 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing some two-story townhomes on the south portion of the property, three-story apartments in the middle portion, and then some three-story mixed-use buildings adjacent to East 57th Street. The applicant did hold the neighborhood meeting in the middle of April, that was done virtually. It was a pretty good, well-attended meeting, roughly 20 neighbors participated in this virtual meeting. Some of the concerns that they had were traffic coming through the existing residential neighborhood to the south, they had concerns on some drainage, and also the east three-story apartment building that's facing north and south, they were concerned of those twin homes that the people would be looking over off their decks and over into their yards of the twin homes. After that meeting, the applicant did go kind of back to the drawing board and came up with this concept plan, a little bit different, and tried to take some of those neighbors' concerns into, into effect. They shifted that apartment building from going north to southeast and west, so all the decks will be facing the north or south. They also had to provide another street for future access to the rest of that farmland apartment or property to the west, and then those twin homes now would be roughly over 100 feet from the first apartment building from those existing twin homes on the south. We did have, still have some neighbors that come to the planning commission meeting with some concerns about traffic. If you look at this plan, and if you've ever been to that subdivision to the south, you know, you can't really get to southeastern unless you go down through the subdivision and then west, and Bonson Avenue actually doesn't go all the way south to 69th Street. There's an existing large drainage ditch that you can't get across. So, with traffic modeling and everything we've done and the applicant's done, most of this traffic is most likely going to go to the north, that's going to be a lighted intersection, and then they will either be able to go straight or west or east on 57th Street.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason on this one? All right. Counselor Staley?
So, Jason, how did the neighbors receive the, the updated, you said there were a few who still had problems?
Yeah, they, they still had some concerns, mostly apartments, you know, not apartments, why can't we have single, single-story twin homes, still traffic issues, but like I said, most of that traffic should go north. Drainage, they didn't really have as many concerns as you can see with this site plan. They added some additional drainage ponds in there, and they will be utilizing the city's existing storm sewer, that'll be put in, but, but some similar concerns. We didn't hear as much as, as these apartment, people living in apartments overlooking their properties with the decks, with them moving that apartment complex to the west and shifting it from north and southeast and west, but.
And so, let me just make a comment about this, that that's why this piece of this is so important. We have those neighborhood meetings, and time and again, on my four years on the council, I have been involved and watched this process evolve to a way where everybody goes back to the table, you have a little talk, you have a little compromise, and you come up with a better product for everyone involved. So, Jason, I appreciate you facilitating that. I think you've got a, tended to have a very warm, open attitude towards constituents and residents, homeowners, and I have, the other thing, I guess through the years, I've heard from people when they're concerned, I haven't heard a word from the homeowners in the area on this one. I know some of us, when we do hear that, we go out and do a site visit just to get our eyes on the actual situation, because it's hard to visualize it from a map up on the screen. So, anyway, we haven't heard anything, so I feel rather confident moving ahead. If there is, I would say to the people, they're not here tonight, but if they have concerns, reach out to us before June 3, so we can do a little more due diligence on that. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Counselor Nitzer?
What are the street classifications of Bonson and 57th?
Well, 57th is probably one of our busiest arterial streets in the city, and if anybody's traveled Bonson Avenue between 26th and 57th Street, it's classified as a collector, but it's probably our busiest collector in the city. It'll still be a collector to the south, 80-foot right away of 57th, but it probably won't carry as much traffic as the north because you can't get to 69th Street. So, at that intersection of 57th and southeastern, we, it is classified as a neighborhood employment center. Your first major access point is Bonson Avenue, so this kind of does fit within our comprehensive plan to have some commercial and then kind of transition into some office apartments and then to twin homes and then to single-family.
This, this sort of project goes to what I've been talking about, which is if we can't get an apartment at a collector and an arterial, then we can't get them anywhere in the city, and as a policy, we have to figure out how to make them work somewhere. Can you show me the first plan one more time? What is that down there on the southern end?
Those, the, the.
Blues?
The blues, those are two-story, well, we classify as apartments, but they'll look, look as like townhomes.
How many units?
I believe eight in each one, but they'll stay two stories, that's the RA1 zoning that only allows two stories. And then, as we went through comments from traffic engineering, that's where they had to eliminate some of those, the ones on the southwest corner, to get that future street, because then that street will eventually go over to the west when Mr. Ryder's property develops down the line, all the way over to, or all the way over to southeastern avenue.
Well, and neither one of these is binding, they're just, they're just concepts, but personally for me, why would you do the second, why would you put a street in somebody's backyard, rather than having a two-story building which is the same size as a house? I mean, they can do whatever they want, I just.
Yeah, and we've, we've talked about that, too. The applicant has worked about possibly putting the connection up there along the south side of the first building on Phase 3, that's another option. It's, you know this, Craig, when we go to certain neighborhoods, some people like to have the access behind them, some people like to have a building behind them, it just really depends on what the neighbors want and what the applicant can do. So, I think they're open to pushing it to the north. It hadn't really come up at the planning commission meeting about having that, or the street behind there, it was only really one of our planning commissioners that had a concern about it, but we hadn't heard that from the neighborhood yet.
The other thing is, are, is there more impervious surface in that second one, unless? Or is it just look like it, because things are moved around?
It, it probably looks like it a little bit because of, there's not garages on this one on that east side, this one would have garages. It's probably pretty similar. I mean, if you look, it's probably not too much of a change.
Sure. Well, I guess whatever everybody agrees with is fine, but this is one of those, I would say be careful what you wish for. I, I, I'm sometimes a little mystified, I guess, but that's personal preference.
Any other questions for Jason on this item?
I'll move to set the second.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you very much. One question for Jason. In the actual view, or the Google Earth view, it, it shows that there's a lot still empty along East 57th, just to the east of this property, at least in this view it does. Is that lot still empty?
Well, this, I, I'm not positive on that. Are you talking about that's just to the east of the northeast building there?
Yes, on the northeast corner of this property.
This aerial would.
At least what I'm.
Sorry, go ahead.
Attached is, at least what was attached to the documents, because I'm not sure that I'm viewing on, on WebEx, which I'm on, I'm not viewing the slide that I'm referring to. It shows that there's still an empty lot. I was wondering if there's enough room there for another set of twin homes.
I'm just going to click back over here to the zoning. Yeah, that would be another twin home lot. I'm not positive, this is an aerial, I'm assuming from 2019 that we utilized, and that's showing that empty lot, but I can confirm that, I, I'll go back and check to see if we've got a residential building permit on that yet, but that is one more empty lot for a twin home.
Okay, thank you. Plus, so the live work, just to review here, could be business office, offices, it could, business offices, could be three-story apartments, correct?
Yeah, the, the applicant Lloyd Company's plan for that is to have, similar to if you've ever been over to Donegal on 57th and like Nevada on the west side, that first story is your neighborhood services, like a dental office, maybe an insurance office, maybe a gym, maybe a small sub shop, and then two levels above that would be apartments in that first layer along 57th Street.
Okay, and then the RA2 is the area where they're, are they planning three-story apartments there?
Yep, they would do the three-story apartments on that, the RA2 portion in the center.
And RA1 is going to be townhomes?
Yep, the RA1 would be that south portion with the blue rectangles, and those would be a maximum of two stories and 24 units per building, but they're planning on doing eight units.
Okay. Eight units, did you say, or 80?
Eight for each building.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and, and the reality here is, I know it was zoned ag, but it is a situation where ag property, especially when it's surrounded by developed property, is likely to change. And the, I had heard from one family, and they were concerned that it wasn't going to be more twin homes similar to theirs. I mean, the real, the reality is, is this proposal does follow Shaped Places guidelines, and they are, whether they like it or not, unfortunately, they are the buffer, the twin homes would be the buffer from the single-family homes that are to the south of them from the rest of this development. Is that not correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions.
All right. Thank you, counselor.
I'll move to set the second reading for Wednesday, June 3.
Second, Nitzer.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Nitzer on that. Counselor Erickson?
One of, just, just to draw the obvious attention to it, you know, we're in a pretty crazy time right now of a pandemic and, and things that are, are a little uncertain, and so to have this kind of an investment in, in Sioux Falls is incredible. The fact that we're still able to grow, we're still able to build, and we're still able to reinvest back into Sioux Falls is a really big deal, and so, a project coming forth of this magnitude, I think, is something that we really need to celebrate as a community, given the circumstances we're in. So, obviously, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this one, council? All right. Let's take a vote on it, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item 23.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself on this item. Thank you.
All right.
Item 23, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 1212 South Main Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District, number 11978-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, June 3, 2020.
The applicant and owner here is Ryan, Ryan Noonan. It's located at 1212 South Main Avenue. It's about .14 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is we're looking at matching the correct zoning with, of the current use of the property. It's been a two-unit converted house for some time.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Speaking, Mr. Mayor.
Counselors, you got any questions for Jason on this one?
Move approval?
Second, anyone?
Second, Sale.
Got it. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale, set a date of second reading for Wednesday, June 3. Any discussion? All right. We'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven, zero. So, Erickson is back, we'll move to item 24.
Item 24, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 1404 South Foss Avenue from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the LW Live Work District, number 11974-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero with the following condition: Development of this parcel is regulated to the AD1, AD2, or AD3 forms only. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, June 3, 2020.
The applicant and owner here is also Luke Jessen with Lloyd Companies. This is located at the southwest, or southeast corner, excuse me, of East 18th Street to South Foss Avenue, within just west of the Dolly Farm Development. It's .79 acres in size. We're really talking about is this little RD1 chunk on the west side of an existing larger parcel that's already zoned live work. The applicant is looking at rezoning that little chunk, and then in the majority of that large live work lot, constructing this mixed-use building, they wanted to, to zone that existing lot to live work to give them a little bit more flexibility if they have to shift things here or there, but they were, they are still planning on constructing a twin home, or, excuse me, a townhome on that small chunk. Staff felt that we still needed that transition and still needed a proper transition from the commercial of Dolly Farm to this mixed-use building, four-story mixed-use building, and then there's some existing single-family villa-type uses across the street to the west of Foss Avenue. That's why we were recommending, and the planning commission recommended, to put a condition on that lot to only allow up to an eight-unit townhome on it, and then that'll kind of ensure that it will still have that step down from four stories to two stories to the single-story villas to the west.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right. Counselors, do you got any questions for Jason on this item?
Move approval?
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, June 3 on this. Any discussion, council? All right. We'll take a vote on it, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item 25.
Item 25, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 2201 West Bitterroot Street from the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban and O Office Districts, number 11948-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020.
Uh, the applicant here is Damian Graybo, the owner is Prairie Hills Plaza LLC. Uh, it's located at the southeast corner of West Bitterroot Street and South Trevoli Place. Uh, this is just northwest of the Western and 85th Street intersection. It's about 1.62 acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a one-story office building on the north lot that's adjacent to, uh, Bitterroot Street, and then, uh, they're looking at constructing some five-unit townhomes on the two lots south of this, uh, the office lot.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this topic tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason on this item?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, June 3rd, any discussion, Counsel? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, we'll move on to item 26, please.
Item 26, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign federal aid bridge improvement grant application resolution for the reconstruction of the West 49th Street Bridge over the Big Sioux River.
Good evening, Kurt.
Evening, Mayor and Counsel. Abbott Dahmer, do I do it?
Can you move that forward, Tom? There you go.
There we go. Uh, item 26 is a resolution that we are looking for, allowing the mayor to sign a grant application for bridge reconstruction. Uh, just a little bit of background on, on some of our structures and other funding, grant funding. Uh, we have about 50 structures on the National Bridge Inspection Standard Program. Uh, there's some criteria there that, um, that requ, uh, is part of the requirement for those bridges and box culverts. Uh, in the past, 2019, we're actually, was awarded, uh, West 12th Street Bridge and South Minnesota Avenue Bridge for preservation funding. Those projects are, uh, going on this summer. And we've also been awarded earlier this year for 2020, the, the other four listed, and we'll be working on some design agreements, uh, for those, again, just preservation, and we'll be looking to, uh, uh, construct, do that preservation work next year. Uh, in mid, mid February of this year, uh, South Dakota was allocated a little, close to $34 million in federal funding to be used for replacement and rehab, uh, of bridges listed in the poor condition, and, uh, the federal aid match is about 8218, as you can see there. Uh, working with our, uh, consultant, we identified the 49th Street Bridge as one of our bridges that is in poor condition, uh, for many factors. There's about a 32-page report that lays out, uh, different aspects of the bridge deck, the, the piers, the substructure, and, uh, it is identified as one of our poorly rated structures. Again, working with our consultant, we have a preliminary cost estimate of $9.8 million. That does include design and construction, so that would be the amount that we list on our application, which we are asking for the mayor to sign. Uh, if, if that estimate was true, um, federal aid would be a little over $8 million, and our local match would be about $1.7 million. Again, this is just, uh, an application, uh, that we're requesting that the mayor sign, and we'll get it submitted. It's due here in a couple weeks, and Engineering, uh, requests your support and approval.
Thank you, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, Counselors, do you have any questions for Kurt on this? I'll start with Counsel Nitzer, and then Counsel Starr.
When would you expect this to be in the capital program if approved?
Um, I have that. We, right now, um, if we didn't have any funding, we'd be looking at preliminary design in the 2023, 2024. Uh, if we were awarded grant funding, uh, we would be looking at, we have to have it bid by Septem, September 30th of 2023. Uh, it most likely would not, due to the design timeframe, probably wouldn't be bid and constructed next year. We'd probably be looking at 2022 at the soonest.
Probably a design one year and construct a second?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, so, uh, Kurt, putting the bid package together with the consultant, what, what does something like that cost? I'm, I'm assuming it's an engineering company that's the consultant, and?
Yep, Clark Engineering does, helps us with all of our, our bridge rating, and I have, for the, um, I have that somewhere. I don't know the breakdown, but it's something we could get you.
It's fine, I just, I was curious, uh, when you put in an application for a grant, that you spend the money, but it's money we would've had to spend getting ready for this project anyway, correct?
Correct, we would, yeah, if we didn't have the grant funding, we would, uh?
Still be working down this road to put the information together, so, thank you.
Other questions for Kurt on this? Okay, and look for a motion on the item?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Sale, discussion, Counsel? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero, next item, please.
Item 27, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a real property lease agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Dabbert Properties LLC.
Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Chief Matt Burns, uh, here tonight to ask your approval for the, by resolution to approve our Southwest Report-to-Work location lease. If you recall, on May 6th, uh, we went into some detail at the informational on this, and would just, uh, look at this project in terms of, it is at 4,000 West 57th Street. This lease has been incorporated into our 2020 budget. It is under current lease by Paramedics Plus, and they will be looking to move out of there by August. Uh, it is a five-and-a-half-year lease for a building to be used as our report-to-work location with the effective date of July 1st of this year. Monthly payments are $5,069 and due at the beginning of every month. The city has an option to purchase this building at the end of the lease for 1.5 million, or extend the lease for additional five years, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thanks, Chief. Uh, is anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Chief Burns? Counsel Staley?
Uh, Chief, if you would just, um, clarify for the public how this, this, uh, model, report-to-work is going to be different than a precinct. You, you told us about that at, at our informational.
Sure, well, uh, we had a consultant that we hired, the city hired and was approved, um, and recommended that we build in the southwest part of the city to increase, uh, the, the workspace, the parking space, and certainly the locker room space at our building. Um, a precinct is a model by which you have a completely separate command structure, and also you record the statistics for a given geographical area serviced by that precinct separately from other areas of the city. That's not what this is, that's not what, what we're proposing, because that's not what we need, nor did that, uh, was identified by the consultant.
So, that, if I remember correctly, the, the public, this isn't a facility where someone could go in to report a crime. You're not gonna have a counter for people to come in to?
Correct, this is originally envisioned, that's not what, uh, is, is what we would have here, we wouldn't have a front desk area, it is merely a, a location for officers to, to report from off-duty, going on duty, get into their uniforms, get their assignments in their cars, and go out into their, into their areas to take calls and respond to emergency calls.
And those officers are going to be, uh, servicing that part of town, that, that, I mean, there's gonna be a division line, so they wouldn't be taking calls, um, you know, in the central area, or, unless I suppose there was an overload, but they're, they're gonna primarily be helping the safety.
Exactly. The officers assigned to this Southwest report to location will be assigned to beats or areas of designation in the southwest part of the city, subject to call, uh, if needed to other areas, but primarily there.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the chief on this? Any questions on the phone?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Motion approved by Erickson, and then seconded by Counsel Sale, any other discussion, Counsel? All right, let's take, oh, Counsel Nitzer, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just for the benefit of the public, there was a lengthy discussion at our informational that we would have to start treating leases as, as dead. There was a GASB regulation, but we got notified by the Finance Department that that regulation has been delayed two or three years, so there's not going to be a partner resolution or ordinance. We don't have to go through all of that, it's just approving a lease.
That is correct, and I actually had a note on that, and Sean will thank me to state that now, and that is in the prior informational. It was noted that the new GASB 87 accounting requirement, it did appear necessary that that would be, be a case, uh, however, GASB has been, uh, delayed for two years, so that won't be necessary. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on this? All right, let's take a vote on it, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero, item 28.
Item 28, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Rich Gary, Dave Knutson, and Eric Weiser to the Washington Pavilion Board of Trustees.
All right, any of those folks here tonight by chance? All right, Counselors, do you have any, uh, well, let's put a motion on the floor on it.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
All right, motion approved by, uh, Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on this then, Counsel? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight, zero, move on to 29.
Item 29, a resolution reappointing an Audit Committee member to the City Council Audit Committee, Dean Bucknerberg Audit Committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Nitzer?
Uh, one of our citizen board members on the Audit Committee, Dean Bucknerberg's term expires at the end of May. He's served one term of three years, he's eligible to serve one more three-year term, and he, uh, would like to do that. He's been diligent and engaged, a good member of the board, so I'm going to encourage your support for his reappointment for one more term.
All right, thanks, Counselor. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Counsel Staley?
Um, let me see, I, I served on the Audit Committee for a year, and I worked with Dean, and I found him to be forthright, um, co, full of common sense, and I'm just absolutely delighted to, uh, vote for his re, uh, appointment.
All right, should we get a motion on the floor on it?
Move approval?
Nitzer?
Motion approved, Nitzer, I'll give the second.
Second, Breckie.
All right, I'll give the second to Counsel Breckie. Sorry, Counsel Selberg. Uh, any other discussion, Counsel? All right, we'll vote on Dean then.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight, zero, move on to item 30.
Item 30, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, temporarily reducing transit services due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Mr. Ekoff, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselors, thank you for your time this evening. Um, if you remember last week, we were here talking about transit services, and we extended for one more week where we had six routes suspended, but we told you we were probably based on driver return and demand, we'd be back, and we'd be looking possibly to, to increase, and that's what we're asking to do tonight, is to restore the six suspended routes, and actually, the proposal we're bringing to you tonight is kind of how we initially intended to go to the reduction of services, but then we had a driver test positive and things happened, and then we went to another step. So, tonight, we're asking you to restore the six, uh, suspended routes. We are going to go with hourly service rather than half-hour service, and we will eliminate evening service with the last bus leaving at 6:45 in the, in the, in the evening. Um, we have enough drivers back now to cover the routes, but it's pretty thin, if somebody would get sick, uh, it would be, uh, we would be in danger of not covering, so we're gonna go back carefully. Uh, this provision also asks that you, uh, carry this forward to June 27th. The mayor has ability to, uh, increase service, not to decrease service, to increase service if demand would show, would so call for that. Um, there, there was a PTAB meeting on Monday, uh, and they approved this plan going forward. Uh, Sam Trebelcock is here tonight, and he'll talk to you about ridership, talk to you a little bit more detail about the drivers, and of course, answer any of the technical route questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening, Sam Trebelcock, City Planning and Development. So, just to give you a kind of an update on ridership and also, um, staffing, right now, ridership has come up just maybe a little bit, uh, we're operating somewhere around just under 700 riders a day, which is still far below what we started out before COVID, of course, because that was at about 2,700 a day. But we're up a little bit, and we're expecting that demand will increase a little bit, so we want to make sure we accommodate that, um, starting, it would start next Tuesday. We'd use the remaining portion of this week to, uh, get the word out, get the schedules, um, developed, and put them on the website, and, right now, in terms of staffing, there's really, uh, all but six drivers are back, um, so we have most of the drivers that we would need, as, as Jeff was talking about, it's still a little thin to run a full service, and certainly want to do that, um, in, in, in the best way possible to move forward, and, and still knowing that demand is really low, um, we want to start out and, and see how it works with all routes, all 12 routes, as Jeff had said, during the day, and just hourly service. So, it, in, in some cases, we run half-hour service on peak hours, we wouldn't do that, it would just be every hour. With that, um, would certainly take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? All right, Counselors, you got questions for Sam or Jeff on, uh, this proposal here? Look for a motion on it?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Sale, is there any discussion on it? Counsel Nitzer?
I just wanted to share, I had a good discussion with Sam a few days ago about this, and a couple interesting items that are worth remembering is, once again, remembering that this is, uh, a vital service for many, and, and in fact, some would call it infrastructure, so we have to figure out how we can serve it and get the, get people the rides that they need, uh, and I appreciate that this allows them to be nimble, they can increase if they need to, increase as the ridership hopefully comes up, and hopefully as people are getting back to work, and finally, um, although fares do generate some income, it's not near as much as you would think in the total amount of the, uh, of the system, so even if ridership is low, we have a, a pretty heavy fixed cost just from wages, so, you know, whether, whether we're running or not, so I think, and we can't project the future, so this gets us going, gets us moving, and then they can react as things hopefully improve, so, happy to vote for it.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion, Counsel, on this one? All right, we'll call for a vote on it, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, passes eight to zero, move on to our next item, please.
Item 31, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, encouraging Sioux Falls landlords to show flexibility during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Counsel Staley, you gonna present this item?
I am.
All right, the floor is yours.
Tom, if you want to put the definition up?
So I received the resolution and a slide.
And the definition of resolution? Jim sent you that?[1604.81]
Yeah, this is what I received.
There you go. Now, first of all, for the public here, let us make this very clear, that this is not a moratorium on evictions. This is a resolution. A resolution is a recommendation. We make them all the time. A few resolution examples that we've had recently, we had, the council passed an anti-hate resolution. We have legislative priorities that are resolutions. We had the refugee resettlement resolution. So the resolution is not binding, it, again, it's just a recommendation coming from the council. And about the last four weeks, the council passed a resolution recommending to the public how to handle safe distancing. After we didn't do the shelter-in-place ordinance, the council passed, I believe it was unanimously, a resolution recommending how we would like things to move forward with the public. So that's an example of what resolutions are. After much COVID discussion, and having discussions in the community about the issue of evictions, rent payments, the One Sioux Falls Fund, homelessness, and concern for all people impacted, I drafted this resolution. Again, a recommendation to encourage all parties involved with the housing situation to work together, to ensure that we're doing the best outreach to everyone during this very unique time. I did have a conversation with a banker this week who told me that they're working with people who have mortgages, working with people, mortgages, to say, how can we help you, that we will not foreclose on you, we're going to give you some grace periods. So I think everybody's trying to work for flexibility here. I did have a conversation with Paul Gorley, who is an apartment owner in our community, and after that discussion with Paul, I said, you know, Paul, I'm going to offer an amendment to the resolution as well, and I'll read that in just a minute. But first of all, the resolution says, talks about some whereas language that is taking, taken from what we've already been doing on some of these resolutions that we've passed. I'll start with the last two, whereas the City of Sioux Falls recognizes the numerous economic hardships brought upon the community as a result of COVID-19, and whereas the city understands that landlords and property managers also have a right to protection of their property and to all due process concerning their contracts and leases with tenants. Therefore, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Sioux Falls, that the city encourages all landlords to show flexibility during the COVID-19 pandemic by, and let me stop here, I know many landlords are already doing this. First bullet point, immediately stopping the assessment and accrual of all late fees and penalties for non-payment of rent for those impacted directly by COVID-19. Second one, demonstrating flexibility with rental due dates for those impacted directly by COVID-19. Third one, allowing tenants who have been directly impacted by COVID-19 to pay partial amounts of rent and provide a written agreement for full restitution. And the third one, accepting, or fourth one, excuse me, accepting payments from the One Sioux Falls Fund with no further financial obligation to the tenant. And lastly, stopping the pursuit of evictions exclusively for non-payment of rent for those impacted directly by COVID-19. Now, before we move into the public input part, which is coming next, I want to say that, Tom, if you put this up, I have come up with an amendment that I will be proposing that, out of my discussion with Mr. Paul Gorley, and I also had a conversation with the Multi-Housing Association this weekend, the amendment says that the city encourages all tenants to make every effort to communicate with their landlords, to develop a payment plan, provide verification that the hardship is directly related to COVID-19, and to utilize the resources available through the One Sioux Falls Fund. I acknowledge, and I think we all do here, that this is a very complicated issue, but at the end of the day, we do want to make sure that no one is put on the street unnecessarily. And I know there's, we're going to be hearing input from people, the discussion is a fabulous thing to facilitate at this meeting, and so, and I also am open to any other amendments, and if people, if my colleagues don't support this, I understand, I've reached out to all of you, reached out with our city attorney and worked on this, so that's, that's what I have to say. But again, not a moratorium on evictions.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight, please come forward.
Mr. Arbusa, it's Sioux Falls. To my understanding, Teresa, I support her 100%. Yes, I do not support. So if you look in the court records, I guess, that some individuals or landlords have gave all the eviction stuff, so when people get an eviction, it's all listed in a court. These are, these evictions were way before COVID. So when you pass a resolution, that means that we have a problem, some landlord's throwing somebody out on the street, right? But in the court records, it doesn't say that a landlord is evicting that person right now due to COVID. Here, there are some slumlords, and I have talked to them, and they're not even putting their own people out the streets. And these people, 90% of them, coming out of the prison system, they don't even have a job yet, and they're not kicking them out. So if it's not a problem, if it's not a problem, don't fix it, if it's not broken, don't fix it, right? I'm sure these landlords and these property owners are not rich, or if they already still got mortgage payments. You have to run a business, right? There are some people in the council that are landlords. You don't pay your mortgage payment, you're late on it, that's on your fault. So people has to pay their rent so they can be able to pay their mortgage, because not everybody is rich and can afford to pay mortgage payments and everything out of their pockets, that's why people rent. I'm going to stress, nobody, no landlord, not even the slumlord I talked to, that is on my slumlord list, has evicted anybody over here. I don't think we need a resolution for this. If it was a problem and people were homeless and getting thrown out of their places because of COVID, or they couldn't pay or whatever, but these are pre-existing, these were already in the court system, and now they're in the court system to be evicted now. So we can't hold, I mean, we can't hold the landlords accountable for that. I mean, we can't tell the judge, stop the evictions right now because COVID's here, please don't throw them out, judge. If we don't agree with the judges, guess what, we have elections for the judges. Always elections for judges, circuit court judges, if you do not agree with eviction court, but I'm going to tell you something, when people are in Section Eight, they can stay eight, nine, 10 months on evictions, and it's not right for the landlords, and not pay a penny. And when people get this assistance and abuse this assistance, it's hard to evict them out of a rental. And I'm sure that we don't have the lower end, we have high-end renters and middle-class renters, but I'm at the lower level, way lower level, so we're poverty people, and not a near one of them is kicking them out, not a near one. So slumlords, nine of them on my list, nine slumlords is not putting anybody out, they should go to tell you something, because slumlords don't care about nobody, they will kick you out in a minute and find somebody else because it's a revolving door. I'm telling you now, I support Teresa, but I do not support this resolution because it is not broken, and we don't need to fix nothing here, and thank you for your time.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? Good evening.
Good evening, Will Anderson, Sioux Falls Tenants Rights Union. First of all, I want to thank you all for your leadership, for your continued guidance that you've shown our community at this time. I recognize this is not the direct action that we had asked for, but this is a show of good faith on your part, it's a step in the right direction. I would hearken back to the words that Pastor Gering used in his invocation, and I would ask you to reflect on those and take that step. You have the data, we've talked about the data, there's 13 evictions that have been filed this month so far, in spite of any anecdotal evidence. I'm glad the Multi-Housing Association is here tonight with a whole crew of landlords, I don't know if they've got 30 more out in the lobby, but if every one of them comes up here and tells you tonight, well, we're not doing this, nobody that I know is evicting people, someone still is. So I want you to bear in mind two things, okay? They do not speak for all landlords, there are some large property management companies in Sioux Falls that are not a part of the Multi-Housing Association, that's a fact, and someone is still evicting people. So we heard from a tenant this afternoon about 4:00 PM, he lost his job over a complaint that he had made about proper protection equipment, out of money, okay? Can't file for unemployment. He got evicted from a company, it's an out-of-state company, they're a newer company, they're a smaller company, but if you look at the data of the total share of evictions, they're quite eviction happy, if you can use that term. He is in the hospital this evening, but his mother got us some documentation showing that. So again, in spite of any anecdotal evidence someone wants to come up here and tell you, the facts suggest otherwise. People are still being evicted for non-payment at this time. Great that there are people like Sean Doherty, or I'm sure the innumerable people that are going to come up here behind me and tell you that they're not doing that, great, but they're not the only landlords in Sioux Falls. So don't misconstrue our ask here either, you know, we're not asking for a total stop on evictions, we're asking for a moratorium on evictions for non-payment. If a tenant is committing crimes or violating their lease agreement, landlords still and should have that recourse. The other thing that I would, I would ask you keep in mind is that we're witnessing this increase in eviction levels despite a federal moratorium on Section Eight properties. When you think numbers should be going down, they in fact are not. The numbers are a low indicator, people are scared off, they self-vacate, there are landlord websites and agencies that talk about how to win the eviction process in South Dakota using the three-day notice to quit. I can send you that link if you'd like. We're of the belief that even one person forced into homelessness at this time is unacceptable. You've heard from me, I want to leave you with some words from a friend of mine, Sister Peggy Bohm, from the Presentation Sisters of South Dakota. She had a couple of words she wanted to share tonight, but she can't be here due to her age and other restrictions, but she wrote, "Never before have we been more mindful of how we are all connected throughout this common experience of COVID-19. The image that comes to me is that of being the body of Christ. When one part of that body is in pain, the rest of the body feels the effects. Those with COVID were helped by our heroic medical staff and others, that list goes on. You were a part of that body that came to assist those suffering financially by setting up the One Sioux Falls Fund. For this resource, so many were helped, I know, because hundreds came to Caminando Junto's and other nonprofits for rental assistance. And yet, there continue to be members of our family body who are vulnerable and struggling financially. Even though the One Sioux Falls Fund and the newer fund, the Emergency Relief Fund for Immigrants have helped many, there are still some who are falling through the cracks and being evicted. Some of this is due to the fact that many do not know how to navigate the virtual system to access funds. Some are behind on rent or lost their jobs and are in need of two or three months of rent now. Many are now going back to work. But on behalf of the most vulnerable, I pray that you would pass a resolution granting a 90-day moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent. This will give nonprofits time to help the people process requests through the funds that you and others have made available to them. I want to leave you with the reminder of what Christ taught us in Chapter 25 of the Gospel of Matthew. Truly, I tell you, just as you did it to one of the least of these, who are members of my family, you did it to me. I want to thank Counselor Staley, and I would ask you to support her resolution as it is amended. I think that's a reasonable amendment, and I would ask you to support it this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Chairman Steng, it's Sioux Falls. I also am a landlord. There, I've evicted maybe two people out of 40 years, and I had a good, I had good reasons to do it. I do work with my tenants. If they, if they tell me 15 days in advance that, hey, I'm running a little late on my, on my rent, if I pay on the 15th, that's fine with me, but I do have payments too, and they realize that. One thing is, right now, when people are getting laid off on their jobs, they're getting an extra $600 on their unemployment, plus their unemployment. Damn good money, probably more than what they brought home to begin with. What are they doing with it? They all have smartphones. If you're having problems, you maybe get rid of the smartphone? Got cable? You get rid of the cable to be able to pay your rent to live? You got satellite TV, internet? What comes first? The toys or a place to live? I'm not here, I'm not here to push anybody out of my places because I got great tenants, but there are some that don't, and this is one way to get rid of a bad tenant. But these people are making good money. There's people out here right now looking for employees. You could go out and find a job right now, I could find 10 of them within an hour that would hire me, even at my age. But the thing is, these people don't want to go look for a job, because why? They don't have to. Do I feel sorry for them? Some of them I do, some of them I don't, because some of them bring it on themselves. My mom and dad always taught me when I was growing up, make sure you got money in the bank for a rainy day. And I'll tell you what, that has told, that has taught me a lot, because I'll tell you what, I make sure that I have money for a rainy day.
Good evening. Come as, come as close to the mics as you can there, thank you.
This is good?
Yeah, you bet.
Amy Ibis with Vantus Commercial Real Estate, and on behalf of the South Dakota Multi-Housing Association, I appreciate the concern of everyone on evictions. I'm concerned we take it seriously. I and all owners put the tenant's safety first and foremost, as well as a fully functioning property for them to live. I do believe the data presented is feeding on emotions of everyone and is not accurately reflecting the true picture. The Sioux Falls Tenants Right Union has presented a blanket statement that evictions are up 20% based on 27 lockouts, and has represented this to news agencies, clergy, the mayor, and the city council. What are the lockouts for? South Dakota Multi-Housing and the owners took the time to research those 27 lockouts, and as detailed in a letter that we sent to you all, I'll just quickly summarize it for everybody else. There was one for criminal activity involving an altercation with a knife, 10 were for unpaid rent and lease violations, and I want to state the unpaid rent is over several months of unpaid rent. The lease violations were for several reasons, but for some, it was destruction of property, threatening and harassing other tenants, and possible criminal activity. 15 were unpaid rent before COVID took place, and includes several non-payments dating back to 2019, one as far back as July of 2019. One took place for non-payment for April rent. I reached out to that plaintiff in the case to find out the reason for moving forward with an eviction. That tenant refused to set up a payment plan or resolution with the landlord and refused to apply for the One Sioux Falls Fund and any other resources that were out there to help them. His refusal to pay the rent was because he believed Trump enacted an eviction moratorium. Again, this landlord tried working with the tenant and the tenant refused. Enacting an eviction moratorium will only increase and encourage non-payment of rent as indicated in the last case I just presented. Finally, according to Chief Justice Gilbertson, who is watching this issue very closely on a statewide level, stated in a letter to the South Dakota Multi-Housing Association that we again shared with you as well, that since March 31st, no presiding circuit judge, excuse me, has contacted me to report any significant increases in either foreclosures or evictions. So I think we can all agree that we do not have an eviction problem, and that landlords are trying to work with the tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Denise Hanslick, Executive Director for South Dakota Multi-Housing, representing residential rental property owners and managers in the Sioux Falls area. First, let me say thank you for the One Sioux Falls Fund. I hear over and over what a godsend it has been during this crisis, and I truly believe it is what sets us apart from others in the country. We appreciate Counselor Staley's efforts with this resolution, we do not, however, feel it is necessary. As we did in April, we surveyed our members in the Sioux Falls area on May rents. We had 80 responses, 59 had received One Sioux Falls Funds for their residents' May rent. Of those, then, we asked, what are they doing with the remaining 30%? 46 reported that the residents had already paid their rent, or their portion. 11 reported that resident has not paid their portion nor responded to the owner or manager's calls, texts, emails. 34 report the payment plans have been set up with residents, two owners waived the additional 30%, and only one had started an eviction process for May's rent. I have a couple of comments from our survey that I have from members. Any respectable property owner or property manager is working with the tenants to find solutions for both parties. Any eviction moratorium would encourage tenants to not pay rent. The rent is due, it is not forgiven, and this could be misinterpreted by tenants and could hurt them down the road when they try to get caught up on past rent they're interpreting as forgiven. We also asked them, are they charging late fees? 62 said no, only 13 said yes. But with the caveat on the comments again, we are not charging late fees unless the resident doesn't contact us after the grace period. In a couple of instances, they charged two late fees because they had to chase down the tenants after the grace period. Another question we asked them is, are they serving evictions? 26 said no, 25 said yes. And of those, we then asked for specifics on why. And I should say that even though we had 80 respondents, they may be responding for multiple properties, so if the numbers don't add up to the 80, that's why. But of those 25 yeses, we had 38 for criminal reasons, 40 for lease violations, 22 for non-payment before COVID, and eight for non-payment during COVID. And a couple of additional comments from our members, we would never evict for COVID-related hardship provided the tenant was using the resources available, for example, filing for unemployment or assistance stimulus money to pay the rent. If they just pocket this money and refuse to pay, this is not COVID-related. All tenants and their families deserve a place that is safe, and by not allowing evictions, it would be encouraging behaviors that have no consequences. If a tenant refuses to utilize the available resources that are provided, there are numerous assistance options available for tenants, but the tenant needs to put in the work to obtain the financial support. Again, we want to keep the tenants during these times, but it is a two-way street. Rent moratoriums do not promote motivation to find the necessary means to pay rent. Non-payment of rent... Nonpayment of rents not only affect the landlords, but city governments as well. As nonpayment of property taxes, maybe it's the property insurance, nonpayment of staff, mortgages, vendors, suppliers, all are affected by nonpayment of rent. Everything has a trickle-down effect. And that was a comment from one of our members. So I hope you see that property owners and managers are already being flexible with the residents by allowing payment plans, waiving late fees, and some have forgiven that 30% that the One Sioux Falls does not pay. No one wants to evict. However, not all property owners and managers can make these allowances. This is not just a large property owner or property management issue. We have small businesses, the independent rental owners that rely on their income from their rental property. Their livelihood is at stake. If you approve this resolution and ask property owners to demonstrate flexibility by accepting partial payments or waive late fees and rent, are you also going to the banks to forego late fees and accept partial payments? Who is going to pay the employees of the property? Who's going to mow the lawns or collect the garbage? Because these are all ongoing expenses. I want to stress the importance of communication between the residents, the managers, and the property owners. And if a resident can't pay rent, they should.
Thanks, Denise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Bruxford. I live at 22 North Spring, and I also serve as the Director of the Naomi Project, where a worker is an immigrant's rights organization. Our name comes from the Book of Ruth, where Naomi helps her daughter-in-law, Ruth, understand what her rights are as a worker and an immigrant, how to exercise those rights, and establish herself in her new land. But typically, we work on employer-employee relationships, but because a number of our members, a few of whom are here tonight, we've gotten involved in this issue of rent, and we're all aware of the ways in which COVID-19 has disrupted our economy and disrupted people's lives. And it sounds like we're not that far away from each other. I hear fellow Sioux Falls residents voicing the values that we're talking about in this resolution. And contrary to how it's been talked about as a moratorium, it's not a moratorium, it's a recommendation to do what a lot of you are already doing. And it would be a way to further encourage those who might not be on the same page to get on the same page, because now, as Sister Peggy said, we're never aware of how we're all connected. And, you know, it takes time to file for unemployment, it takes time to file for applications for assistance and for those to be processed, it takes time to find another job, and that's what we're asking for is time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. I'll make sure the guy in the back, you come next, sir. No, you come ahead, ma'am. That nice young man's been waiting there. You come next, so. Good evening.
Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Shelley Lynn. I'm an area director with Adique Property Management here in Sioux Falls. And I just wanted to express that evictions are never our first go-to. They're incredibly expensive for us as an owner, anywhere between $752,000 and $1,000. And that's before court costs. We want to work with our residents. We don't want them out on the street. We have been working outside of our normal policies for their promised pays to make sure that we're working around. If they do have a job, if they've just gone back to work that we're working with, how much can you afford? Because obviously, we don't want to take their whole paycheck either. So we're really working with them, waiving late fees if they're getting the One Sioux Falls Fund and any help from county.
Thank you, Shelley. All right, you're on now, ma'am. Good evening.
I tweeted at you the other day. You might not think I'm nice. My name's Jason Walsh. I get that this isn't binding, but it is used for, these resolutions are used by certain people for public shaming if you don't follow it. I have four rentals, and my problem is that it's you guys passing it, not you personally as individuals, but you guys have made decisions that have played a role in this. I mean, I think you have to admit it, your decisions might be right, you might be wrong, but they've played a role. I have four rental properties in this town, four homes, small homes. All four have not paid a dime since February, other than the One Sioux Falls Fund. All four are servers at restaurants and places in town. So we all, I mean, the virus, your decisions, whether they're right or wrong, I'm not casting stones, have played a role in that. So for then you pass a resolution for me to maybe stand up in June and say, guys, I can't do this anymore, I can't make my payments, where the resolution doesn't have on there asking the bank to not say after 90 days, Jason, make all your full payments, it doesn't ask the county to waive one-fourth of the taxes, it doesn't ask the insurance company to waive one-fourth of the bill, you're taking the decisions you made that played a role in this problem and now compounding it all on the landlord. And I just don't think that's right. I've worked with every one of my tenants. I waived the other 30% when the One Sioux Falls Fund came up and paid that, but I can't keep waiving this forever. And the gentleman in the back is completely wrong. The decision like this is pitting, now, I get the big corporations, but from my perspective, you're pitting my family against my tenant's family. That's not right for anybody. There's no need for a resolution, you know, and that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone else to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Linda Dunham, an independent rental owner, and I own Solutions Property Management. As predicted, I'm also going to say, we worked with our tenants before COVID. We've been flexible, we've waived fees. We're going to work with our tenants long after COVID. So I also agree that we don't need a resolution. I'm also a commercial real estate broker, so we talk about waiving the rent, and I agree it's a resolution, but it is used for public shaming. I wanted to just give you just a little snapshot of what that actually means if a landlord has to waive that 30% or if it would be enforced that they have to. Let's assume we have a 12-plex building, $725 rents, three units need help from the One Sioux Falls Fund. If we have to waive 30%, that's $217.50 a unit, or $652.50 for all three. Let's assume this lasts four months. We don't know how long it's going to last, but let's assume four months. That's $2,610 out of the landlord's pocket. That's $156.60 out of my pocket, because I get paid based on rents collected. I have eight employees. I haven't had to furlough anybody. I have my own commercial lease and my bills that I have to pay. We take that one step further and assume that poor owner of that 12-plex just can't absorb the 30% anymore, decides he's going to sell that. If he sells that 12-plex to a buyer that's expecting an 8% return, that drops $27,000 off the value, the property value, because it's income-driven. So your net income sets the value of your property. So not only have you lost $2610, they've lost $2610 in funds desperately needed to pay operating costs when they go to sell it, if they would sell it in that year, or you have to wait three years, we look back three years, when we're selling something, you've just taken $27,000 off the value of that property. So I just wish people would put a little bit more deep thought into things and understand the full ramifications. And I understand it's a resolution, but we know resolutions can turn into ordinances. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Linda. Good evening.
Mark Webber. I've got some more statistics for you. This is on housing units. This isn't directly related to the resolution tonight, but it is directly related to the Sioux Falls Multiple Housing Association. I think they really overrepresent themselves. When you look up census data, about 3/3 of us in this community are homeowners. A third of the units of housing units are renters. Of the 3/3 of the housing units are renters, when you look up the, this may be a little bit dated, but the number of units that the Multiple Housing Association represents, they're about 1/3 of the 3/3. That's why I say I think they're overrepresenting their cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Brian Magers, a small-time rental property owner here in Sioux Falls. I reside at 811 North Fairfax Avenue. First, thank you to the organizers and contributors to the One Sioux Falls Fund. The fund has assisted one of my renters and therefore has assisted me, and I appreciate that. Again, second, thank you to the community outreach, St. Vincent de Paul Society, Salvation Army, Minnehaha County, and all the other organizations that are providing rental assistance during this time. They are making a positive impact on our community. In the Gospel, according to Matthew, we are encouraged to care for our sisters and brothers in need. My experience is that there are many rental property owners who have done this quietly and unnoticed for many years. Concurrently, many are agreeing to payment plans, partial payments, and waiving late fees. When the city places a moratorium, or even talks about a moratorium on utility disconnects, as you have, and any possible future costs associated with that falls across everyone here in the community if those utilities don't get eventually collected. But when we talk about rent not being paid, that type of situation falls solely on the shoulders of the property owner. It will not be spread across the community. Rental payments or the lack thereof do not exist in a vacuum. During eviction, moratorium on rent delay plan, the rental property owner will need to continue to pay taxes, utilities, mortgages, et cetera. Finally, I think the real answer is the continued encouragement of the people in this community who have the resources to continue to fund the One Sioux Falls Fund and the many other community and religious organizations that are assisting our tenants at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Jo Madsen with Binder Midwest Properties, and we manage over 1,200 units in Sioux Falls. So I just wanted to share a little bit about what we're doing as well. Like many of my colleagues here, we are waiving late fees and working with our residents who have come to us with issues with COVID-19. Please keep in mind, like others have said, that if we don't receive our rent, our property owners aren't able to pay their bills as well, and that becomes a problem with paying taxes, utilities, insurance, our employees, maintenance for the properties, cleaning, and services such as that. We've had one eviction that started prior to COVID-19. It actually started in October, but by the time we received the judgment for the lockout, it was March. So that eviction was over $5,000 for that property owner. So please keep in mind that most property owners do not want evictions. We do whatever we can to try to prevent that. We make payment plans. If it's a disturbance, we issue warnings. We do anything we can, because evictions cost a lot of money for the property owners, and they take a lot of time. So just please keep in mind that we're doing what we can to work with our residents, and we're all in this together, and we just ask for your support. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Amy Miller, and I own and operate Charisma Property Management. And I myself am a renter, and I have 10 full-time staff in my office. And of those 10 people, only one person owns a home. So when tenants are calling and making payment arrangements with us, the people that are helping them are on the same side as the tenants. We have the same rental obligations to our landlords in Sioux Falls. We understand the expenses of renting in Sioux Falls. We are not implementing any policies or procedures that we're not responsible for our leases to our landlords. Payment arrangements, most landlords are already implementing the policies and procedures of this resolution. When tenants call to make arrangements, we are working with them. We're referring them to financial resources in the community, such as St. Vincent de Paul, Community Connections, Minnehaha County, ICAP, the Genesis Program, just to name a few. The truth does matter. Councilmembers are elected by the community, and you represent all of us, no matter what your party affiliation is. And it is really, really important, when you are voting on policies and procedures and resolutions, that the homework is being done on your end and that you're not taking for word the testimony of the people that bring it to you. Has the council gone to the Minnehaha County? Has the council sought the sheriff's department for the reports that we looked up? That information is critical, because you are making policies and procedures that affect me as a renter, me as a landlord. And so to bring resolutions forth, it's very important that you are looking at these numbers and not just listening to the testimony of the people coming before you. There is something good that can come out of this, though. I am hopeful for the letter that was sent to you by the local clergy that are in support of the residents in this community. I'm hoping that this is their way of offering their assistance for tenants in crisis mode, whether they're having mental issues, whether they're having financial issues. I am hoping that if they put their name on that letter, that that wasn't just something in words. I hope that they put action behind it, because all of us can sign our name to something. All of us can say we stand for something, but when we're pushed against the wall, are they just words or are they action? And are these people going to help our tenants? I am really hopeful that we can reach out to these entities as another avenue to help our tenants stay in their homes. Instead of bringing resolutions forward, let's work together to educate tenants and landlords together. The South Dakota Multi-Housing Association has been around for 50 years. Since COVID started, we've started townhomes where property owners, landlords can call in, and we have experts inside and outside the industry that are helping us maneuver through the COVID. The Tenants' Right Union, when tenants are in crisis mode, are they offering job resources to help those tenant find jobs to pay their bills? Are they referring them to the clergy that are on those letters to help with financial and mental resources? What are they offering? Are they offering education to tell the tenants, contact the landlord so the landlord can work with you, because it affects your credit? It affects your ability to rent, and landlords do want to work with you. There's going to continue to be evictions. There's going to continue to be crime at properties. There's going to continue to be drugs. There's going to continue to be lease violations, and there's going to continue to be nonpayment of rent. But resolutions like this don't help. We need to continue to educate. We need to work with the Tenant Rights Union, and we need to do what we can do to keep people in their homes. But policies and procedures are something that we need to take seriously, because every day, we are called to serve people, no matter what our walk of life. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amy. Good evening.
Chris Torpleson, 101 South Bridge Street.
Step up just a little bit, Chris. There you go. Thanks, man.
First of all, I want to thank all of you, City Council, Mayor, certainly the city staff and first responders for everything that you have been doing. I appreciate your efforts and dedication, and certainly your sacrifices. Teresa, I appreciate what you're bringing forward tonight with the amendment. However, at the end of the day, our company, from the very get-go, you know, had a commitment that we are going to do what it took to keep people in their homes. And amendments that are proposed simply create confusion, create confusion for the residents, create confusion for our teams. There's a lot of explanation that has to come behind it, because it does come from the city. We have 6,000 units. Of those 6,000 units, we have six people that have evictions, and those, majority of those, are post or prior to the COVID-19, and the others are just, in essence, not communicating. So we have a policy in place. As long as people continue to communicate with us and work with us, we will continue to work with them. And I think what you need to leave it is with the businesses, the management companies, to continue to work with their people, their residents, the people that call those places homes, and let us do our job and let it be. And I can assure you, we are a community that comes around and gathers together in times of hardship. This is one of those situations, and I'm certain that it'll resolve itself with time. Again, I appreciate what you're bringing forward and trying to achieve, but I think it's best handled at the business level and at the property level.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else for public input on this topic? All right. Then we're going to move into discussion, and I think we should have a motion on the floor before we move into the council discussion. So should we do that?
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution.
Marshall just moved to approve it.
Second, Brecky.
So we have a motion by Selberg, seconded by Brecky. And now Counselor Staley, would you like the floor?
What?
Would you like the floor now? Did you want to?
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me say, I deeply appreciate all the conversation we've had tonight. You know, this reminds me a little bit of the conversation that we had recently when we were talking about the employees within the businesses. And the mayor was constantly being contacted by employees who were having concerns. And he was telling the employees to go back to their businesses. And he was telling the employees to go back to their businesses to talk to them about their concerns. And it turned into something where they... where actually the city kind of intervened on that and started to implement... Because of this unique situation with COVID, they stepped forward and brought awareness to the fact that employees needed to have a voice. So I am so heartened to hear so many of you come forth and to have this discussion tonight that you are telling us, yes, we do care. Yes, we are being empathetic. Yes, we are communicating with our tenants. Yes, we are encouraging them to do the One Sioux Falls Fund. Yes, we are accepting 70% as the total payment. That is fabulous. This is a unique situation. But again, this was not a moratorium. Somehow, I think the Multi-Housing Association, they were talking about it last week. We've never discussed a moratorium within this group, this elected group. We are... This is a resolution, as I said before. We had a resolution talking about anti-hate. You know, some people will come to our town and to our meetings and say, "Well, we don't hate. Why are we addressing hate? There's no hatred." We had an anti-hate resolution. The room was packed with people talking about how we had to make a statement about that. So whether we vote for this or not, I think it was worth it. And you may be angry at me for bringing it forward, but I have no regrets, because I think that we're better informed about where the landlord association stands. We've heard from the other side of it, people that are saying we've got concerns about everyone in our community. At the end of the day, it sounds like we're all coming together to do the right thing for our people. And we're going to be very aware, whether this thing passes or not, how we move forward with evictions and listening to the community. And hopefully, they'll continue to contribute to the One Sioux Falls Fund. So I would like to... Is this the appropriate time to make my amendment? Okay. So... And once again, I tried to reach out to all the entities. I was trying to listen in the midst of this. That's why I called the Multi-Housing Association. That's why I called Lloyd Company. Tried to get ahold of Bender's, couldn't, didn't have his, Mike Bender's phone number. And I called... Who else am I missing? I tried to reach out to everyone that I could to say, "Hey, you know, what would you like to see involved with this?" So anyway, I'm going to make a motion that the city encourages all tenants to make every effort to communicate with their landlords to develop a payment plan, provide verification that the hardship is directly related to COVID-19, and utilize the resources available through the One Sioux Falls Fund. My amendment.
Any second for that?
Second. Sorry.
Second, Breckie.
Two seconds. So that's a good time.
We only can take one. We'll give it to Counselor Starr. Any other discussion on that amendment? All right. Seeing none, let's take a vote on the amendment, please.
Councilmembers, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Naitzer?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. The amendment passes five to three, so we're back to the main motion as amended. Further discussion then on the main motion as amended. Counselor Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. Let me get my email pulled up. Just some questions that I had. Will, if I could ask you a few questions. I'm not familiar with your organization, and so I'm looking for you to help me better understand a little bit. But it would be accurate to say that your organization's been on the forefront of this...
Come on up, Will.
...effort to put this resolution in place, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So can you tell me who are some of your board members?
We are a small nonprofit. Our board consists of three individuals. It's myself, my wife, and a gentleman named Stephen Dummermuth.
Okay. So how does one become a member of your organization, then?
We do not have a formal membership or dues-fang process, because our right to organize is tacitly outlawed under South Dakota state law. So in the risk of not jeopardizing anyone's housing status, we exist primarily as an information clearinghouse. We answer legal questions on the daily from people, just in response to the comment, "What do we do for people?" I would love to share with you my inbox.
So do you have...
I would love for you to see the pictures that we get, the stories that we hear, and the guidance that we give to tenants in Sioux Falls who do not know their rights and are facing possible legal action from their landlord.
So do you have bylaws or a mission statement?
I could send you those, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. So are you considered a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(4)? What's your designation?
C4. And like I mentioned earlier, we're pending recognition from the IRS. We filed. We haven't heard back.
Gotcha. Thank you. I just needed a little extra information with that. And while I... You can sit if you'd like.
Thank you.
I know the statement was "we, we, we," and so that was my question as far as who is this board and if the members actually pay dues, or what is... How is that makeup really advocated for? Just trying to understand this organization. For me, I think that this lies best with those property owners and that those decisions that you're working with folks. Shelley Unruh, if I could ask you a couple of questions, too, and just have you give me a high level on, are the funds depleted for One Sioux Falls? You don't have to go into great detail, but I'm sure others have questions for you. Are the funds depleted for One Sioux Falls? And has anyone been turned away from getting those funds?
Sure. What I can provide for you is some updated information regarding the One Sioux Falls Fund. So I am Shelley Unruh, Housing Manager with the City of Sioux...
Come up close, Shelley. There you go.
Sorry. Shelley Unruh, Housing Manager with the City of Sioux Falls. Want to talk to you a little bit about the One Sioux Falls Fund here and the dashboard. Currently, we have received about $2.6 million in gifts in the One Sioux Falls Fund. There are outstanding pledges of about $685,000. So the total estimated gifts to the One Sioux Falls Fund is $3.3 million. The total number of applications requesting rent assistance has been about 3,700 applications. The number of applications funded for rental assistance has been a little over 2,600 applications. There are only 838 applications that have been denied. There are 215 that are outstanding. There are about 100 that are pending. And we have the committee, which I serve on that committee, has approved $1.5 million through the One Sioux Falls Fund. The total dollars sent to landlords has been a little over $1.3 million. In addition to assisting renters, we have also helped 22 individuals stay in hotels. We have a large portion, or a significant portion of our community that live exclusively in hotels as their primary residence, and we've helped 22 of those. In addition, we've helped 10 people with their mortgages in situations where they have a funding mechanism that is outside that of a normal mortgage. So the One Sioux Falls Fund is in the process of doing a second round of rental assistance for May. So the numbers that I am presenting to you helped tenants either with an April rent or a May rent, but we are still looking at doing a second round of assistance to those that are still in need. I can tell you that the number of applications for that assistance has continued to drop significantly. So we're about half of the requests of where we started with this fund for rental assistance, which is why the One Sioux Falls Fund is now considering helping individuals with mortgages. Because I will share that there is some concern with this resolution and the impact that it would have on that available housing stock. For every family that is 30% of AMI, 100 families, or for every 100 folks that need housing at 30% of AMI, there are only 39 units available. If you put into a resolution that prohibits them from collecting the full revenue, I am afraid that we're going to start to see reduction in housing stock. So as the housing manager and monitoring the number of available units, that is a mark that is difficult to create new units at. So the only way that we're able to create new units at that lower income level is through tax credit-type properties or subsidies. So if we're limiting landlords' income, then the long-term effect will have a net... will have a negative impact on the number of available units if those landlords are not able to continue to operate those units. So when you're cutting their income for those units, then it puts those mortgages potentially at risk. So it is a cause of concern for that. The other thing that I want to share with you about the One Sioux Falls Fund is that it represents over 879 individual landlords that have been impacted by the One Sioux Falls Fund. So I have a list of 879 individual landlords that have received support through the One Sioux Falls Fund. So it's not just the larger companies that have benefited from the One Sioux Falls Fund. There are many smaller entities that have received funds from the One Sioux Falls Fund as well. And the other information that I would share is, I also worked very closely through this in connecting with resources. So Minnehaha County also serves on the One Sioux Falls Fund, providing assistance. So when somebody gets denied, we are providing additional information to other services that are available within the community. So Minnehaha County is a large support with folks that are unable to pay rent prior to the One Sioux Falls Fund. So if you look at the requests that they've received, March through May, for 2020, they received 386 requests for rental assistance, 70 requests for deposits, 163 for motels, totaling 619 requests between March and May of 2020. When you take that same amount of time for 2019, Minnehaha County received 705 requests for rent, 165 for deposits, 36 for motels, totaling 906. So if you compare the requests for Minnehaha County from 2019 to 2020, they have dropped significantly as a result of the support of the One Sioux Falls Fund. I can also tell you that I also serve on the Vulnerable Needs Team that is responding in support of our shelters, and the shelter census has remained level throughout the pandemic. So the average census at Union Gospel Mission has been 68. For men, their capacity is 74. The average census for women is 18, and their capacity is 40. At the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, their average census for men has been 79. Their capacity is 80. And with women, their average census is 14. Their capacity is 20. So we're not seeing that impact for evictions on the shelters as well.
Thank you. And so I would just... Two things that I just want to follow up on for statements. Thank you for the information. One, I would really strong... Will, I would really strongly encourage that those folks that you are working with is to partner with the city. We have this One Sioux Falls in place for that very purpose. There are additional opportunities a lot of churches give, a lot of areas give. There are a lot of wonderful people in this community that do give, that have some resources and options, without making the businesses take the brunt of the hit. The reason why I did not support the amendment is because I do not intend to support the resolution. And so for me, consistency, I just didn't want to support the amendment, because I will not support the resolution. I think it makes it extremely confusing for the average citizen that's trying to navigate a really uncharted time where you're barely keeping your head above water, and now we're going to throw this on them, being confusing. I just don't see that it accomplishes what we need, and we really need to focus on that action and with the One Sioux Falls Fund. We need to continue to fundraising and allowing people to apply for a second wave. I love that you've now encouraged mortgages, possibly, because it's not just... I mean, there's not just a stigma that if you live in an apartment, you're poor. If you live in a house, you're poor. That's not the way it works. It's all over the board. There's incomes all over the place. You just choose to live in an apartment, or you choose to live in a house. And so for me, it just is extremely confusing for those folks trying to navigate this, that I believe that the good folks here are doing what's important, and I would encourage you to stay involved, Will, and do the work with the One Sioux Falls.
Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I go to the question, you know, just to look at the resolution, you know, encouraging Sioux Falls landlords to show flexibility during the pandemic. So that immediately asks the question, is this a concern right now? Is this not happening? From what I've seen through my homework and study and visiting with folks on this, it's already something that's happening to a large extent. I think there's always this perception, when you get into rentals and that, that all rentals are owned by wealthy corporations, greedy individuals, and that's just simply not the case. Most folks that own these rentals are people that work with their tenants on a regular basis. I think, as it was said tonight, they did it long before COVID. They'll do it long after COVID. Landlords are not necessarily ever anxious whatsoever to be kicking people out of their rentals. It's a long, expensive process. I think, for the most part, a lot of folks have relationships with folks that they do do business with, and they've been working on those for years. And I think most people do care, especially in this time and that, and they're going to do what they can to do what they can for their tenants. What has the city done to this point? Again, it's been hammered home pretty hard so far. With the One Sioux Falls Fund, the city has stepped up. I think we've had 2,600 applicants that have been helped through this fund. So the city has assisted and stepped in where they can. I do agree with the statement that I heard at one time. I don't think the city... The city is not a judicial system. It should not be determining evictions or stopping evictions. It's not their role. So I guess in general, I'm seeing a lot of this being done already. A lot of what's here makes sense, I guess, to a point. But I think it's happening at this point. But then when you put... I think confusion is another word that's come up a couple of times. When the city gets involved and puts something like this on print and that, then there's some confusion as far as how does it get carried out? What happens with that with people who are landlords and companies that are renting and that type of thing? So I do appreciate the fact, Counselor Staley, that you did reach out on that. You've done that rather well in your last couple of things that you brought out. I appreciated the conversation. You brought that for a platform tonight. As far as your amendment, I mean, as the proposal goes, I voted for the amendment because it made sense with what you brought forward to begin with. But I just think I will not be supporting this tonight, but I do appreciate the conversation. I do appreciate the people out there, the landlords, the people that are working with their tenants. And from the statistics that I've seen so far, I have not seen a runaway problem with people getting evicted because of COVID. And I think that, again, most people care. They're working hard with these folks and will continue to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Breckie or Kylie, do you have any comments on this item? All right. Hearing none. Is there any other comments? Counselor Sale?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, a week ago, after we had the meeting, I contacted Jim David, our legislative director for the calls. I said, "Jim, I think I'm going to bring a resolution together on the moratorium to see if we can do it." We had a nice conversation, and we talked about all the landmines that are in something like this. The intent is very good, that we want people to work together to keep people in their homes. And so then I kind of dropped it, and Teresa Staley was on the case for that, too. But I'm going to relay this back to my own personal experiences from a lifetime. And when I first started 40 years ago in the city, we were renters, and it was hard to pay the rent every month. And my landlord had one property, mine, and he worked with me, but there were still a lot of times it was the 10th of the month before I could get the rent to him. The economy was a lot different 40 years ago, where there was a waiting line to work at Morrell's. They would hire one a week at that time. So we struggled. And then I got good employment. Well, I had good employment, rolled the clock ahead a few years, and then I became a landlord. And I thought, this is going to be my key to wealth, to own property, to have people live in my property, and to go ahead, and every month would be good. And the first couple of renters were very good, and then we had some things go sideways. And I could not afford to miss that rent payment, because I had a mortgage to pay for that property. And that's how most people get involved in the business. Craig Lloyd was the same way, based on his stories. And now look where he's become. So for us to pass the financial burden from one group of citizens to another group of citizens, I just don't think is fair. I don't think it's addressing the problem. So I will not support the amendment. And I just want to point out that this body put $750,000 into rental assistance in the Sioux Falls Fund after another city department, the Housing Department, put $250,000 in there to alleviate this problem. So the City of Sioux Falls has put in $1 million. The mayor has gone out and raised another over $2 million to take care of this situation. Now, is that going to be enough in the long run? I don't know. But for right now, I'm satisfied we've come a very long ways to help out the situation. So I will not be supporting this resolution. So I will not be supporting this resolution.
Counselor Kylie, did you have a comment? All right, I might be having some technical difficulties with Counselor Kylie on this. Counselor Nitzer.
Can you hear me now?
We got you. Go for it.
Very good. Thank you. Well, there's several points that I'd like, like to make. One, I would like to correct something that was stated by Mr. Willie Anderson earlier, that the, the laws are stacked against the tenants' rights union, and that is not the case. In an article that's online on Storyteller Journal, and it, and it's from a meeting that Mr. Anderson hosted on September twentieth at the Sioux Falls Library, the very last line of the article stated, "The tenant unit is still unofficial as there are no official members and no dues. This is due to the fact that tenants are still unable to organize due to retaliation under codified law forty-three thirty-two twenty-seven." The reality is, codified law is there for the protection of the tenant. It's actually entitled "Cause of Action Against Lesser," who, who in this case is the landlord for retaliatory conduct. The, the landlord cannot retaliate by increasing rent above fair market value. They cannot decrease the electric, gas, water, or sewer services. They cannot give the renter, the lessee, notice to vacate the premises when such notice is not based upon a breach of the terms of lease subsequent to any of the following special events. And one of the three special events listed is the lessee, the renter, has, if they have organized or become a member of the tenants' union or organization. So that law is actually in place for the protection of the renter. So that's, that's inaccurate information. Um, you know, I'm, I am confused, and one of the individuals who, who provided public input had indicated, um, you know, why does this apply only to renters? And I'll have to be honest that I've had that same question, you know, why not to homeowners who have difficulty with their mortgages or paying their, paying their taxes and their other bills? So, uh, and, and another concern that I have is that this resolution implies that there is a lack of cooperation on the side of housing owners. The staff simply don't reflect that, and I'll go over the statistics that also have been misleading in publications. But also, the testimony this evening and the numerous emails that we received, and Counselor Shelberg was addressing one of them, but, uh, and one of the emails I had mentioned is, and the point hasn't been, it's been made a few times, but I want to emphasize that this process of an eviction does require anywhere from three to four months to complete. So many of these, these evictions started before the current COVID-nineteen situation that we are dealing with. Tom, if, if you would at, at this point, bring up the very short PowerPoint that I And maybe it's up on your end, but it's not showing on WebEx, but I'll go ahead anyway.
You got it, Rick. It's up.
Very, very good. Some of the inaccuracies have come from, unfortunately, from Sioux Falls Tenants Rights Union, Mr. Anderson's group, on their Facebook, where they state that eviction rate has crept up twenty percent. And I'll show in a moment that that's not the case. And then also in, in the letter that was prepared for signature by the clergy members and other housing members, that also reflects the twenty percent increase, which is unfortunately incorrect. So let's go to slide two, Tom. Okay, in the, in the clergy letter that I referred to, it states, "The Sheriff's Department has informed us that even without Section Eight evictions, they have processed fifty-two evictions since the beginning of March. This represents a twenty percent increase over the approximately forty evictions that annually occur during this timeframe." All right, now, according to, one of the, uh, public presenters asked, "Why haven't we followed up on this data?" Well, I can tell you that I did follow up with the Sheriff's Department. This past Friday, I had additional follow-up with Sheriff Milstead yesterday, as well as again today. And Sheriff Milstead, on the bottom of the current slide, states, "The fifty-two evictions is based on the forty-two completed lockouts for March through April 2020, as well as ten lockouts we have received, but not all yet processed in May 2020. When compared to last year, we had forty lockouts in March through April 2019, with twelve additional in May totaling fifty-two in 2019 during the same timeframe. That shows an equal number of lockouts for the same timeframe from years 2019 and 2020." Unfortunately, the, the letter, it, it omitted the lockouts from May of 2019. That was not included, and so that's why they ended up with a twenty, an inaccurate twenty percent increase, where at the time that that letter was circulated, it was, it was identical. Let's go to the next slide. Current, uh, and then Sheriff Milstead further stated, uh, on, in an email to me this past Friday, "As for actual lockouts, there are court orders that the sheriff's office is, by statute, required to comply with. I have never known the city to have any involvement in the civil election process. Also, I do not know of any authority the city would have to override a circuit court judge, nor does the city have jurisdiction over the county or the sheriff." So that's, that's a huge point for me. I do truly question that we have the jurisdiction to do this. Next slide, please. And this was referred to also in public input, and this is the letter from Supreme Court Justice Gilbertson. Uh, let's go on to the next one where it actually highlights a section of that letter. And I'm going to skip down a little bit to the second line where it says, uh, "March thirty-first letter, I asked each of the presiding circuit court, uh, circuit judges to contact me if they saw any significant increases in foreclosures or evictions in their judicial circuits. To date, none has done so, despite the fact we met last week, and they have email access to me. Since March thirty-first, no presiding circuit judge has contacted me to report any significant increases in either foreclosures or evictions, with one exception. Presiding Judge Bobby Rank of the Sixth Judicial Circuit called me two days ago and informed me there had been two evictions filed from the winter area, not from the, the Sioux Falls area." So basically, um, you know, I, I do want to follow up with some, an additional comment that the Sheriff Milstead did make to me in, in an email this afternoon, and so I will read verbatim what he stated there. "During these difficult times, we encourage landlords and tenants to continue to work together as businesses reopen and more and more people get back to work. We are hopeful that the financial strain is lessened and that jobless claims and unemployment numbers start moving in the right direction. I consider it important to show that the actual number, court-ordered lockouts this year are almost identical to the number we had served last year at this time." So unfortunately, due to inaccurate information that unfortunately, um, the press also picked up upon, and then unfortunately, a couple of our counselors have picked up on and brought forward this evening, it has misrepresented the actual facts on the matter. So there is not an issue, and again, I will agree with one of our first public inputters, there is not a problem, there's nothing, nothing to fix here. So I appreciate, I can understand and appreciate the intent, but based on, uh, on owners of rental properties exhibiting flexibility and compromise, and based on, on the accurate data that I just presented, and based on, this is really an area outside of our jurisdiction, as Sheriff, Sheriff Milstead had pointed out, I will not support this resolution. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Are there other comments on this? Counselor Nitzer?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go to Counselor Nitzard, and then to you, Counselor Breckie.
I'll try not to belabor things that people have all said already, but to me, it, it really is a solution looking for a problem. Property owners are working with tenants. When I've received calls, I, I've pointed people to the One Sioux Falls Fund or to talk to their, their property owners, their managers, and they, they've worked it out. As was presented, there really is no reliable data that shows there's, there's any problem. There really isn't. The One Sioux Falls Fund has helped thousands. I am not a big fan of statement resolutions, and I, and I will, I will say that simply, and, and one of the people that spoke at public input touched on it a little bit, because it does create confusion, because there would be a headline that would say, "Council Calls on Property Owners to Wavent," or something to that effect. That will be the messages out there, and you're going to create division and anger and arguments from people assuming that the city has now called on property owners to waive rent or to, to reduce rent. For me, even though this is a statement, I still think it's, it's really inappropriate for me as a, as a city councilor to step into what's really a contractual agreement between two parties and tell one party that, "I'm telling you that you should change the terms of your agreement." I think that's, it's something that both parties need to work out. And I also think, think it's incredibly arrogant for me to assume that there's a one-size-fits-all solution to every one of these, or that I could say to a property owner, "Just take seventy percent," without having any idea what, what your, your balance sheet is, what your property tax is, whether you can even afford to, to do that. Every case is unique. Everyone has its own hardships, and by the way, that's on both sides. It, it's not as if property owners are just, you know, and I think that's part of it, too. There seems, I think there's an underlying current of the property owners are, you know, rich, evil landlords that have plenty of money to throw around, and they're just wanting to throw tenants out. They have mortgages to pay, they have property tax to pay, they have utilities to pay. Both sides are hurting here. They're trying to figure out how to work through this, and I haven't encountered cases where landlords are itching to throw people out. It's expensive, and it takes time. So I, I think this just creates confusion, and we did something tangible. We put a million dollars into the One Sioux Falls Fund, and it's helping thousands of people, and that's what we should lean on and point people to. Thank you.
Counselor Breckie. Counselor Breckie, did you still want the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all of the ladies and gentlemen who testified, and all of the counselors for their due diligence and comments. I was the second being motion to this, this resolution, and I want to give my explanation for that. And I would hearken back to the first discussions that we had when we passed the Sioux Falls Fund, the, the One Fund, and the effectiveness of that. I was very supportive of that and continue to be very supportive of that effort. I think we made a very big and bold move at that time to step out forward, knowing that it was going to be a serious problem for the city if, if people started, you know, losing their ability to have shelter. And that was the purpose of that fund. Shortly into that process, however, we did realize that we had attached no conditions to it, and, and at that time, I began thinking, you know, maybe it would have been appropriate for us to have some expectations, you know, for receipt of that money, and perhaps, you know, tie some string to that money. And, and, and there was some conversations with the committee, and that was really handled, you know, through the committee, and they, you know, actually did change, you know, their course and how they were doing things, and, I mean, check into things further, and really did, I think, an, an amazing job of, of how they're distributing that money and, and serving its purpose. However, at that time, you know, then and now, I felt it was kind of important that the city, you know, speak with one voice as to, you know, its position on what it was asking, you know, our landlord community to do, you know, in, in exchange for receipt of this money. And I saw this opportunity as this issue raised itself again, this question of a moratorium. And I want to make it clear that this is not a moratorium, and a lot of the comments, you know, and not, tonight were designed to address a moratorium issue, and that is not the issue. I don't think there is any support on the council. Um, I'd be surprised if there was any support from anyone on the council for a moratorium. I don't even think that's been a topic of discussion. But I do think it's appropriate to, you know, have a resolution where the council speaks as one, and, and I, I see this completely different than my fellow council members who have, who I've just listened to your statements. This was intended, and it as written, is designed as a, an invitation, really, to tenants, with the amendment, to tenants and landlords to work together. We stepped up first with Sioux Falls One, and we said, "We're going to help, we're going to put our money where our mouth is. And now we're asking you folks to try to work together as best you can, show empathy for one another, and, you know, try to help us all, you know, in this together, along with the city's funds, and we're going to get through this." And that is the purpose of this resolution, and for it to be categorized any other way is simply inaccurate because that's not how it's written, and that's not what, and I will, I'm here to tell you, that's not its intent. Its intent was to be a statement of, of support, encouragement, and really, I call it an, an invitation to empathy, you know, for landlords to work together with their tenants, and tenants to work together with their landlords that are affected financially by COVID-nineteen during this difficult time, to get us through this difficult financial period. We can talk about mortgages, and maybe that's something we're eventually going to have to talk about, and if we have to put some money, more money into it because of that, I'm certainly open to that discussion. But I do, I do think that, um, that the dialogue was good. It was very useful to me. It was very heartwarming to me to hear what's actually going on, which prior to this, you know, I had no idea. I was hopeful of that, and I was in belief that the vast majority of our landlords, to the extent that they, they were financially able, would be working with their tenants, and knowing the state of the law, being one that it really isn't to, to a landlord's advantage to, to evict tenants, because they just have to find more tenants, and if they have good tenants that are struggling and they can help them through that, it works advantageously for both of them to do that. I do also, you know, have one comment on the jurisdiction issue. Again, this isn't jurisdictional because it simply is a statement really supporting the practices that are already taking place, and something that perhaps, had we been more forward-thinking, we might have actually attached to the, the One Funding when we, you know, a resolution supporting the One Funding, when we put that down and said something like that in this. So the fact that it was done with hindsight was really from an education standpoint, and learning and hearing what was going on out there, and just trying to simply say something, you know, publicly as a body, you know, "Please continue to do that," because that's, that's what it is for me. I'm saying, "Please continue to do this. This is important. We're going to get through this, and, you know, we appreciate what you're doing." And I really think that's, that's what the language of the, of the resolution is saying, and certainly that was the intent of it. So I will be supporting it, because I think that, you know, I, I do see it as a, as a, a resolution of support, and, and this body showing support of the activities that are taking place out there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Starr?
Yes.
And then I think we'll be ready to call a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, and I always worry when people start that way. It never is brief. I, I, I'm trying to figure out where we went off the rails a little bit. I'm going back to the resolution of what we're trying to do, and a big part of what we're, a resolution does, does take a sense of the council, of where we're at and where we're moving forward. And, and it specifically says in the resolution, "Now there be it resolved by the city of Sioux Falls that the city encourages all landlords to show flexibility during the COVID-nineteen pam- panadem- pandemic by." And then it lists a few things that we'd like to see happen, which I think a lot of the speakers earlier today were, or earlier tonight, were very encouraging, and, and they're working with the tenants. And I know that one of the things that happens with people who get in financial trouble, the first thing they do is they go and hide. They don't talk to their creditor. And if we can encourage people to, to talk to their landlords when it's happening, it would be a success of what we've done tonight. The other thing is, is, one of the things that I get to do is get emails from the National League of Cities, and one of the articles that it pointed out to us, "What do you do in these times?" And there is no playbook. There's no way to go, "Okay, that's what we did last time, and it worked." These are unprecedented times. But this author, that, the last article I read, really made a good point. There are the first two things you do in a, in this type of crisis is, one, you may There are the first two things you do in a, in this type of crisis is, one, you make sure that your residents are fed and they have the food that they need, and, two, you make sure that they continue to have the housing that they need. We can make the rest of that work. That's exactly what the mayor did with the One Sioux Falls Fund. He looked around and said, "Look, our people are going to get fed. We have plenty of feeding ministries in town. We have plenty of people who are going to make sure that people who are in trouble are getting fed." And then the next thing he did, he stepped up and made sure that we could do what we could do to house people. This resolution is just a continuation of that. What's really interesting is that we've been able to add a fake news comment into the conversation tonight, that the media got it wrong and misrepresents people. We were able to tell tenants that we're just trying to protect them if you organize and get together with your fellow tenants and form a, a group, and it's strictly for their protection because they can't organize and come together as a group? Wow. I, I'm not sure that's the type of thing that we spend a lot of time talking about what we can do with the Constitution, but allowing people to have a chance to come together and work for a common good, I think that's exactly what we're doing. I'm going to support this because, again, it's a resolution. It brought good people together tonight to have a conversation, and it takes a sense of what we should be doing as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to go to Councilor Erickson and then Councilor Staley.
Just one thing, I, I hope that we're all reading the, the same resolution. I'm a little bit confused by the words of balance and just all of these encouraging things that we're supposed to do. While, yes, it's a resolution, if you read that resolution saying, "Immediately stopping the assessment and accrual of all late fees," who am I sitting in this chair to tell you how to do that? Who am I to tell you how to do that? You know the ins and outs in every single one of the people that you rent from. Stopping the pursuit, again, telling you heavy-handed what to do, accepting all payments and no other further financial obligation. These are not suggestions. These are telling you how to operate your business. What next? You go to the grocery store and you're $50 short? Sorry, I guess we don't have to pay that extra money. That's not how this works. I trust you know best. I trust that you're doing the right thing, and I'm really frustrated at this instead of saying that this is, this is just this really lovely time for us to talk. Do you not think that these people are not talking every single day? Do you not think that Denise and her organization are not talking every day? They are. They're talking to housing. If you want to get involved and do something, get involved and do something and make change, not statements. If you want to be involved well, get with Shelley. Get resources to those people instead of making statements. Do something. This is so frustrating to me, the amount of time that, "Yay, look at everything we did. This is so fun." No, it's not. These conversations are taking place. This is ridiculous, and it's extremely frustrating, this process of saying, "Oh, but we're just, we're just suggesting." No, we're not. We're telling you everything that you need to do to operate your business, and I'm not going to stand for that.
Councilor Staley, and then I, Councilor Kylie wants to speak as well.
And what I, what I want to say is, just for transparency's sake on this, when this came together, I was working with the city attorney on Friday, and Councilor Breckie and Councilor Starr were with me, and, and immediately Saturday morning, I called all my colleagues, and I said, "Yeah, I'd like to talk to you about this." I didn't hear from any of them. I had, in fact, Councilor Knightsard never did call me back. I, I talked to Councilor Kylie this afternoon, didn't hear a word about this sheriff thing. So I just want you to understand that I've, I've tried to reach out to them and communicate, just like we're talking about communication with, between renters and the landlords. I think communication is important. I'm hearing these concerns. Councilor Erickson and I talked this morning. I didn't hear any of this anger in the conversation. I would have been happy to hear their feedback and their concerns. Councilor Selberg, I reached out to him. I talked to Councilor Sale after, you know, he was going to do this first, and I said, you know, "I, I'm not going to be quite as, as in-depth with this as you're thinking about going, Kurt," because he was going to, he was going to make it a little more heavy-handed. I said, "I'm not going to go that direction." I reached out, as I said, I called Councilor Knightsard three times, sent him a text and an email, said, "Please get back to me." He never did. That started on Saturday. Councilor Starr and I spoke. Councilor Kylie and I, like I said, had a conversation. Councilor Kylie, I wish you would have said something about the sheriff situation today. Apparently you were working on this on Friday right away. So I, I feel a little bit like there was kind of an ambush here, and let me say to this fellow in the back there, I empathize with the mortgage situation. I empathize with the property tax situation. I, I just met with our county treasurer last week. We talked about this. So don't think that I might not bring that forward sometime, too, because I think everything is related to everything else. But I, I appreciate what Councilor Breckie said, that we were not meaning to, this is not saying you have to do any of this. What this has done, and despite the anger that I'm hearing from Councilor Erickson, which I didn't mean to make you angry, Christine. Christine, that was not my point, and you weren't angry this morning. But what we did is we brought you all forward. We've had a conversation about this. I will be voting for the resolution. Again, and Mrs. Anru, this, there's nothing that's going to be demanding anything, anybody do anything on this. You said that there was, you said, "This won't prevent anybody from doing anything. There's nothing legally binding on this." I would like to say, I had asked for this when we awarded that, those millions of dollars. We wanted to have a list of the landlords who have received the money. I think that, that we still should get that accounting. And also, I had asked for the, the, we were talking about getting some kind of a contract that the, the people who get the money, those of you landlords, that you have to have some kind of accountability if you're going to accept that 70% payment. That, that just makes sense. So anyway, those are, those are my words.
Got it. Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Kylie and Councilor Erickson then?
Then I would like to speak to.
Thank, thank you very much. It's unfortunate that now this is our, we've been accused of being angry or accused of ambushing when if the councilors involved in this resolution had done the work that the rest of us did and done the follow-up that I did with some of the facts that they were apparently accepting, they would have found out themselves that there were inaccuracies. So there wouldn't have been an ambush if you would have done the work yourself. And regarding fake news, Councilor Starr, I was reading basically verbatim South Dakota codified law. Maybe exert a little effort and read it yourself, and you'll find that it certainly is not fake news. Thank you.
Councilor Erickson.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because I know I hear a whole lot of talking in the audience, that I did clarify with this, the city attorney about what my role is in my business and that there's no financial interest in this and that I was not supposed to recuse myself. So in case anyone has any questions and wants to start talking about that, just want to make sure it's clarified, and I did communicate with my, our, the city's city attorney to ensure that I did not need to recuse myself. So in case you have questions, I would appreciate that coming forward versus just chirping away. Thank you.
A final word on this topic to Councilor Breckie, and then I'm going to call for the vote, please.
Well, again, I guess I would like to say as a final word, since I got that, that privilege, I think we're all on the same page here. I really do. The purpose of this resolution, if you read the resolution in total, was a recommendation with specific suggestion. It was, it was designed and intended to be a unifying resolution, and to the extent that that failed, you know, I'm sad that that happened. I'm glad the discussion happened, and as I look around the room and see all of you, even though you can't see me, I really think that I would, my final words would be this. We are all on the same page here. We're working with excellent people in our community. We're supporting each other. The intent was to encourage that to continue as a follow-up to the One Sioux Falls efforts to, you know, ask our, our community landlords and our tenants to work together, and that's what the resolution as amended does. And again, just as a final word to my fellow councilors, thank you. As a final word to everyone in the audience, thank you for doing what you're doing, both tenants and landlords. And I would make one comment in response to Councilmember Kylie. You presume that the intent of the, that the reason that the resolution was, was brought forth was because of some specific testimony. It was brought forth for me because of, of an unmeant, something that we did when we passed the Sioux Falls One thing. I thought we should have went a step further, and as the dialogue started to happen, I thought this was an opportunity to do that. So again, I want to thank everyone. I'd like to just end with healing words and say, "At the end of the day, we have an amazing landlord community who is doing what we were, would have been asking them to do in this resolution. They're doing it anyway. It's fine." And I want to thank the tenants, and I'm hoping that even by bringing this issue forward, that if there are tenants out there that don't understand the One program and don't understand that there's funding and help available, maybe this, this dialogue will help them to know that and know that they can go to their landlord and talk about their individual situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, I think we're ready to call for a vote on the main motion as amended, Tom. Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Knightsard?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that item fails five to three. We'll move on to our new business.
Item 32, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota repealing ordinance number 47-20, adopting the Sioux Falls Board of Health Business Regulations pertaining to the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, dated May 1, 2020. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, May 26, 2020, at 3:00 PM.
All right, I'm going to pass the gavel over to Council Chair Selberg and open this item up, and Jill Franken and I will tag-team this. So two weeks ago, Council, we passed an ordinance lessening patron restrictions that we've had in, in our community, and I'm not going to get into the details on those because you all know the kind of the landscape we're living within right now, on what those restrictions were and what they are today. You know, we've been careful in Sioux Falls not to talk about our reopening, and using the term reopening, because we, we are in a spot where we never required any businesses to close. So what we have been doing is lessening restrictions on businesses with these ordinances that we've passed to date. Since we passed that ordinance two weeks ago, we continue to see our curve flattening, cases flattening, the mass specimen collection effort that we had at Washington High produced a relatively small uptick in, in the number of cases, which I think, again, all of this is positive news. We have to look at all this as very, very positive news. Our response to the pandemic all along has been to, to flatten the curve, and again, people aren't talking about that as much anymore, but remember, that's been the goal all along, is to make sure we have this healthcare capacity. Right now, hospitalizations are hovering around 5% to 7% on average. We were predicting 20% to 25%. Inpatient beds, we're using about 10% of what was originally projected that we would need for hospital beds for COVID. So what we have tried to do, which is really hard in government, is to respond quickly and remain nimble and not dig into any one position and just continue to respond as, as the numbers dictate. So both of our healthcare partners are moving to what they're calling limited EOC operations, meaning they're spinning down their EOCs. We still have an EOC set up at a law enforcement center, but we will slowly be spinning that down as well. They are ramping up their elective procedures, bringing some of their furloughed employees back as a step to return to more regular operations. And so based on those trends and, and the fact that we have this notice, first reading, second reading, and then when things actually go into effect, landscape that we have to live in, I wanted to bring this first reading forward, knowing that if there was support for this first reading, it would go to a second reading. If this would pass to the second reading, this is going to affect May 29. So today is the 19th, so we still have 10 days before anything would go into effect that we may pass next Tuesday. And between now and next Tuesday, we're also going to have seven more days of our market telling us what's happening and determining what's happening in our market. I drove here today, tonight, to the meeting. I drove down Phillips at 6:15, and there's, there's not a lot of people in, in the bars and restaurants downtown, and they can be right now. They're not. And so I think it's important for this council to start considering, when do we let the market start to dictate when people are comfortable coming back and have us lessen some of the restrictions? Even though they're in place right now, I think removing them is not going to create a floodgate of, of activity early on. The market will slowly dictate when people are ready to resume a normal lifestyle. So that being said, I've spoken to several of you about this. I feel it's worthy of a discussion, and it gives you as a council options next Tuesday night if you move this to a second reading, when you could either thumb it up, you could thumb it down, you could vote to defer it, you could defer it a week, you could defer it two weeks. You have a lot of options then in front of you. But that's what really the administration is trying to do, is to give us some options, give our business community options, and give you all options for where you think we need to move forward from here. So that's a quick overview of why we're bringing this forward tonight. I will ask Jill to give you a quick update on more things said, and I must say, on our way up, she just won the MBE Tribute to Women Award tonight for Women in Excellence for the Healthcare Division, and she couldn't even see it or watch it because she sat in this council meeting for the last three hours. So someone texted me and said, "You won." So congratulations, Jill. That's a great honor.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Jill Franken, Public Health Director with the city. Just a few comments. Tonight's item is yet another step in a series of significant steps that have been taken to ensure that we meet our primary objectives in managing through this pandemic for the community. Those objectives were identified on day one of when we started this journey, and they still apply today, and that is to limit and slow the number and spread of illnesses and deaths, to preserve the continuity of community essential functions, to keep the public informed, and to minimize social disruption and minimize the economic impact. And so those have been our objectives, and they continue to be our objectives. So in addition to policy decisions made by you and the council during this pandemic, the city is going to remain focused on monitoring, tracking, trending, and reporting COVID data. We're going to continue sustaining city operations in a safe, yet productive manner. We're going to continue supporting the operations of our community by outreach in through the SOR program, by the utilization of our isolation center or recovery center, communicating and continued mitigation strategies that have helped us all understand how to operate our daily lives with COVID yet in our community. And then we will continue to work with our healthcare partners, our agency partners, as well as the State Department of Health to ensure our residents have access to the medical care and resources that they need. So next week, we'll plan to bring, provided, or provide you with updated hospitalization projections, as well as new case trending or where we're at with our positive cases and that trending, and those are the data sets that will be the primary data sets that we'll continue to monitor and report to you in a dashboard that will be provided to you regularly moving forward. But overall, based on the data that we're monitoring, which is showing that downward trajectory that I talked about this afternoon of cases and that actual hospitalization rates are far less than we had projected, I do support this repeal being considered. I do want to emphasize that we, as a community, must continue to be committed to the practices that we've established, the social distancing, the hygiene practices, those behaviors that can help us mitigate the spread because the virus, we know, is still here, and we need to continue to be vigilant using the guidance of state and federal officials, as well as the work that we'll continue to do as a city. So thank you.
Thank you. First, we'll go to anyone in the audience who'd like to address the topic before we go to the council. Welcome.
Scott Ayersman, Sioux Falls. Word of the night, hypocrisy. Through this whole thing, I've watched from home to keep myself safe, but I've worked this entire time, as many other Sioux Falls people have worked. But for some reason, the city has said the city employees don't have to go to work. They can stay at home. Why? I don't know why. The city pools have to close. Nobody knows why. Why? For some reason, the rest of us in this community need to risk our lives for COVID. For some reason, the rest of us in this community need to risk our lives for COVID to go to work. And nobody of our elected officials, officials want to protect us. None of them. They've all voted so far to say, screw you on paying your rent, screw you on your health security, screw you on, on packing meat, screw you, go to work, get the economy going. But the city employees who we fund with our taxes don't have to go to work. The city pools don't have to open. Hypocrisy. Why is this? Why is this? I've never been able to figure it out. I agree. I can go to work. I've worked through this whole thing. We've had a safe work environment. We have separated ourselves. We have been on disinfectant crews. We've all taken our turns disinfecting our office. You can work safely. But why can't city employees go to work and open the offices? Why is it that the city elected officials and city government can tell everyone else in this community that they must go to work, but we're going to protect the employees that take our tax money and pay their wages? Why? Because they know it is unsafe to go to work. That's why. It is unsafe to open the pools. That's why. Hypocrisy. Hypocrisy. If you are telling the rest of us that we are safe to go to work, pay our rent, don't hold people accountable in private business, then the city employees must show up to work just like the rest of us. It proves a point. What's the point it proves? If the rest of us are safe to go to work, then the city employees are safe to go to work. Are they not? I can tell you why they're not showing up to work. Because the unions have fought back because they know it's not safe. We weren't living a right-to-work state. You know what that means? You know what that means, folks? Means you have no rights as a worker. That's what it means.
Thank you.
And I would love another counselor to grant me more time. I'm not done.
Thank you.
No, I'm not done.
Any else have any comments?
I have First Amendment rights and in this COVID...
This is boisterous behavior.
I don't care what you have to say.
Kary, can you remove this guy?
Remove me for what? What's the rights? You're going to remove me on my First Amendment rights? Is that what you're going to remove me on?
City ordinance 30.018 decorum. Corum, boisterous, okay? Action gives a warning.
Boisterous? I was talking.
There's a warning. Boisterous means you're done with your time, sir. Can you please have a seat and we'll continue with the business?
You have a problem with hypocrisy. That's what you have a problem with.
Anybody else tonight have any comments?
Hypocrite, our mayor. Hypocrite. Hypocrite. Hypocrite.
Come on up.
Hypocrite. 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 Hypocrite.
Welcome.
How we doing? Tim Stanga. I also have worked every day on this pandemic. I talk to people every day. They see what's going on and they realize that they wasted two months in the basement and now it's time to come out. They realize they can't get that two months back because it was fear mongering. It was where they couldn't trust the people that were bringing out the information. And two, they're ready to go back to work. These people are realizing they're coming out of their basements and COVID-19 is still here. They're still going to get it. I go to Walmart, I go wherever I go. There's more elderly people that are pushing, that are in wheelchairs, that are walking in their walkers. They're not listening to you. They haven't been from day one because they want to live their life full instead of hiding. We don't need our noses wiped. We just need somebody that's going to lead and tell us that this is what we're going to live underneath for the rest of our lives. And no, people know that. You don't have to tell us this. This thing should have been open at the beginning of this month. We've, we've drawn this out so far, it isn't even funny. And if you talk to a lot of people outside, which I do, they say the same thing. It is misleading. And we are getting missed, we are getting numbers that aren't right, where we say how many people have it, but we don't say how many people that don't have it. We don't say how many people we tested to get 51 people. We could have tested 500. But it really makes it look good on the stats. I don't know if the government pays to how many people you have on COVID or not, but I think people got, people are starting to realize that COVID is going to be here for five, six years. Are we going to come up with a cure? Who knows? There isn't a cure for the cold. There isn't a cure for the flu. You might have the flu shot, but next year it's going to be a different strain of flu. So they got to come out with a different shot. People got to live not being afraid. And right now, it's fake news and it's fear mongering. And we got to put out some positive stuff out here saying, hey, people, we can do this. And we got to set up some nice guidelines for these people to open up their businesses. And they honestly do know what they have to do to open up their business. They just need to be able to open up their doors.
Thank you. Anybody else of public comment? Come on up.
I may be a trained economist, but I'm afraid I'm on the side of public health. It shouldn't be a dichotomy between the two, and I know most of us know it's not that way. But I like to quote something that, this quotation from Martin Luther from 1527. He wrote a tract, Whether Christians Should Flee the Plague. In 1527, when the bubonic plague hit Wittenburg, Martin Luther refused calls to flee the city and protect himself. Rather, he stayed and ministered to the sick. The refusal to flee cost his daughter Elizabeth her life. But it produced a tract, Whether Christians Should Flee the Plague. When Luther provides a clear articulation of the Christian epidemic response. We diet our posts. Christian doctors cannot disbander their hospitals. Christian governors, and I'm going to insert municipal officials, cannot flee their districts. Christian pastors cannot abandon their congregations. The plague does not dissolve our duties. It turns them to crosses on which we must be prepared to die. For Christians, it is better that we should die serving our neighbor than surrounded by a pile of masks we never get the chance to use. And if we care for each other, if we share masks and hand soap, canned food and all the stuff that has been suggested in our modern time, if we are our brother's keeper, we might actually reduce the death toll. That's a quotation.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We'll go to the council. Counselors, any comments? Counselor Sale?
I have a question for Director Franken, if I could. Earlier this afternoon, we, we had some discussion about infection rates and testing and, and I alluded to the fact that the governor has said that she's going to test all those people that are currently in long-term care facilities. Do you know when that testing is going to take place?
Well, I'm quite sure they're ramping up to get that started ASAP. I don't know, Sandy, if you have any, we're not absolutely aware, but I know that they're working on that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, counselors? Oh, go ahead.
Yes.
Since I still pass the gavel, I can speak, I think. So it, it does need to be stated that the vast majority of city employees are working at the city. All right? There's, there's some employees that are working remotely from home because they're able to work remotely from home. But you can't have your streets people and your parks people and your firemen and your policemen, the city attorneys here every day. So we haven't all cashed out for the last 90 days. The city is humming and the city is working and we're protecting the safety of our employees. But we also have a city to run and we don't just put it on pause for COVID. And so the, the operations, our coop team, I mean, I got a health director here for another three hours again on a Tuesday night, has been putting incredible hours in to keep the city humming. We love to have pools open. We'd love to be doing some, have things normal. Believe me, we're fighting hard to try and make that work. So we've had adjust operations. Our library folks, our library folks are mowing lawns right now and pulling weeds because the libraries are closed. They're not just sitting at home. They're actually having to work in parks. So we have had to do things that are very, very atypical to city government. And for that, I'm very, very proud of, of our employees. Can we get a motion? Then we'll go to Counsel Kylie.
I'll make a motion to approve for second reading for Tuesday, May 26th at 3:00.
Second, Nitzer.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Counsel Erickson, seconded by Counselor Nitzer. Go ahead, Counselor Kylie.
Well, thank you very much. I did have a discussion with the, with the mayor earlier about this particular item. One of the things that I will be doing very carefully is watching the results of our actions just a week ago in, in opening up bars and restaurants and, and other recreational facilities so that we can see what kind of impact that that may have, not necessarily just on our COVID numbers, but definitely on our hospitalizations because I think that's, that's got to be the main thing that we, we are looking at. So in addition to having just recently opened up, even though it's not wide open, but have partially opened up city businesses that were closed earlier, we also have Smithfield Foods that's back in operation. And I'm hoping that the mitigations in place are going to be effective and I'm sure everybody else is hoping for, for that very thing as well. But those are just two of many variables that we need to keep our eyes on over the course of the, the next, next few weeks. So I do agree that when it does come to second reading, we need, need to look at the data and make a judgment at that time whether we, whether we pass it or, or defer it. So I'm not saying that this is going to be a done deal at, at second reading. It could be a deferral until we get more information. But I do support it for this first reading and I will be voting yes this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sale?
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Sale first, then we'll go to you, Counselor Breckie.
Yes, I have, I need to get to this before Counselor Erickson does. The fact that we started this whole thing was to make sure that there were enough hospital beds for those people that needed hospitalization. So that's where I'm at today. The resolution calls and it says, whereas on 12 noon on May 18, 2020, there's a 14-day negative trajectory in new active daily COVID-19 positive cases, anyhow, Lincoln County, McCook Counties. That to me is a nice number and it's why we put some things in to start, but it's the hospitalizations that I come back to, which we're hovering at a safe level for right now. I agree with Counselor Kylie that we're in a period where opening up the economy, letting people do more things, it's going to, it, let's see where it's going to be in eight days. When the state starts testing all the people in long-term care facilities, I would, I would assume that we'll see more positive cases. That doesn't necessarily translate to hospitalizations. So that's the number I'm looking at. I will support calling for a special meeting next week to look at it again so we can do the best we can do with the numbers we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Breckie?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to hearken back to the mayor's words when we started on this journey and that was at the very initial meetings, we were going to take a measured approach. And I've, I've bought into that. I think we've done that and we've taken a measured approach as we're moving, as we're moving all the way through. The fact that now we're turning a bit and we're going to say, okay, we're going to take a measured approach, moving back down again, it, it, we're still taking a measured approach and that's something I'm supportive of. I am supportive of, easily supportive of a first reading, moving it forward. I, I would parrot what Counselor Kylie just said. We have to watch it very carefully and watch the numbers. You know, should we see surges, we might have to backpedal in our position. The fact that we have the option to defer and to defer and to defer and defer, if we have to, we'll do that. But I think that the time in between first and second reading will give us a new data and new confidence in either to move forward or to back off. So I thank you for bringing it forth. I think to the extent that we can, as soon as we can turn things over to people's personal responsibility and that, that's a parrot of our, of our health director's statement. The more we can turn things back to personal responsibility, the better we're going to be. And this is a movement in that direction. And I think that that is working and, and I just hearken back to the, you know, what's happened with the last resolution. We, people are doing what we're asking them to do. The landlords are doing what they're doing. The restaurateurs are doing what they're doing. The bar owners are doing what they're doing. They're trying to initiate all these, these distancing measures and all these innovative business plans. If that works for us, it's going to be wonderful. If it doesn't, we'll have to react. And the numbers and, and the guidance from our health director and our hospitals will guide us. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Staley?
Let me just state, since the mayor brought up the swimming pool issue in his comments, I, I have gotten contacted by citizens who think that the council voted on this, on moving forward with the swimming pool. So just to clarify for those watching, that, that was the mayor and his administration's decision. We were not consulted with or conferred with about how that was going to proceed forward. And I also have heard from constituents who are saying that, you know, if we're opening everything else up, that, then why, and we, and I brought it up today about the daycare. We've been allowing daycares to operate. Why not try to make some concessions for swimming, outdoor swimming for our community? I would hope that we would keep an open mind on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll call for a vote.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. All right, counselors, any other new business? Motion adjourn.
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Erickson. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
All right. We're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.